Good evening. Welcome to the City Council's November 17th Special City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce staff and City Council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, City Council Member Ray Mueller. Staff present include our City Manager, Starla Jerome Robinson, our interim City Attorney, Cara Silver, and our City Clerk, Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'm city council members. Again, welcome to the City Council's Special Meeting, November 17th. At this time, we ask that the City Council remain on screen for the duration of the meeting, controlling your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage webcams and microphones to make presentations as well as respond to any questions the City Council may have of them. For members of the public who wish to speak on an agendized item this evening, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the ability to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council at that time. I'd also like to bring everyone's attention to the handout on the right side of your screen where you will find the agenda for this meeting, as well as revised minutes from the October 27th. Also would like to remind everyone that all public comment received via web form, as well as presentations or agendized items are available on that agenda. It's on our web, as well as in hand. And that concludes my introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for the updates. The next item on the agenda, are there any informational items the City Council will be pulling for discussion at the end of the meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The first item is C1, Adopt the Transportation Master Plan. To introduce this item is our Senior Transportation Engineer, Kristi Ann Choi.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, and members of the City Council. Kristi Ann Choi, I'm trying to see, can you see my screen?
We can see the presentation. It's just still in non.
Oh, got it. Okay, great. There. Okay, so, as mentioned, Kristi Ann Choi, Acting Transportation Manager with the City's Transportation Division, and I'm also joined tonight with Mark Spencer of W-Trans, who leads the consultant team working on the Transportation Master Plan. And we're happy to be here tonight to present on this project. It's been a long time coming. And of course, as you're well aware of, we're currently in a pandemic, and so the transportation and economic conditions have changed since we started this project. However, we created the master plan to be a flexible and dynamic document, so it can adapt to changing and future needs. So tonight, I'm going to first start off with the project background and purpose, and then go over some of the items in the TMP, as well as ending with some recommendations. So you may remember, the Transportation Master Plan was the highest priority project coming out of the General Plan and Circulation Adoption back in late 2016. In addition, the City Council has made the Transportation Master Plan one of their top priority projects in their work plans, going back to 2018. And the Master Plan is meant to be a document that covers all modes of transportation citywide. It would be replacing our sidewalk master plan, as well as our bicycle development plan, so that it includes both large infrastructure projects, as well as the bicycle and pedestrian projects. In March of 2019, the City Council adopted four goals to be part of the master plan. These relate to safety, sustainability, mobility choice, and congestion management. All of these goals are also related to policies that were in the circulation element, as well as our Climate Action Plan. So just a little bit of our project history. As I mentioned, we started this process in 2017, when we selected W-Trans to lead the consultant team for this project. In addition, the City Council appointed an Oversight and Outreach Committee to provide input throughout the process, as well as encourage members of the community to provide their input and participate. We started with engagement process in the community in the summer of 2017. And then, over the past three years, we've also been meeting with the Oversight and Outreach Committee, as well as the Complete Streets Commission, to get feedback on the recommendations and the prioritization strategy. In addition, this process included updating our Transportation Impact Fee Program. That was one of the funding sources to help pay for some of these projects. And the City Council adopted that new TIF back in late 2019. And then, most recently, we have met with both the Oversight and Outreach Committee, as well as the Complete Streets Commission, to review the draft master plan, and I will be going over their feedback a little later in the presentation. So this is just a cover of the Transportation Master Plan and the outline. This kind of matches the chapters included in the master plan. We intended it to be a user-friendly document, so it includes a lot of graphics, pictures, and summary information. There's also a set of appendices at the end, that includes more of the technical details that went into developing the plan. So just going over kind of the prioritization strategy, this is something that the Council approved in June of 2019. We had originally started out with 190 projects, and we grouped those into four categories. The local and citywide projects, these are projects that would be implemented by the city, the local ones, or the citywide ones being more policy in nature, and kind of applying citywide. Then there's two other groups, straightforward projects, ones that are pretty easy to implement, and then also the regional projects. We have five regional projects. These are larger in scale and cost. And while they are located within the city limits, they are expected to be led by outside agencies. And so then, we prioritize those two, local and citywide groups, into two tiers. Tier one being kind of the high priority projects. We use seven key prioritization criteria, and so if the project met at least one of those criteria fully, then they were placed in the tier one project, tier one priority group. And then, the tier two projects are ones that partially met those key criteria. Now, they're still considered important, but we're looking at them as more opportunity projects, projects where we might implement during a paving project, or maybe alongside a development project. And then, the last two groups, the straightforward and regional, were not prioritized because they have a different implementation schedule. But this is just kind of a summary of all of the different projects in each category. We ended up with 157 projects, and estimating about $158 million to pay for these projects. So that leads into how we might fund these. As I mentioned earlier, we adopted the Transportation Impact Fee Program, so that would be one of the sources. We'd also look at grants and taxes, such as the Measure A and Measure W program, as well as our general fund to help fund these projects. They would be part of the CIP budget, and you can see our 2021 CIP budget, just over half of the projects are related to transportation and streets and sidewalks. And this is something that would be adopted by the Council annually. So I just wanted to go into some of the feedback that we heard from both the Oversight and Outreach Committee, as well as the Complete Streets Commission. A lot more of the details are included in the staff report, so this is just a few items that I wanted to highlight. One thing that came up was how new projects would be evaluated, and how people would be able to see the status of the implementation. And so, staff's working on a web-based map that we can use to link to our website. And then, there was some concern about the difference between congestion reduction and congestion management. And so, we've made some recommendations to change the text in the document, so that it's more consistent with the Council's goal of congestion management, and incorporate the non-automobiles into the performance metrics. There's also some concern about how regional projects are coordinated. And so, we would expect that both staff and council members continue to participate in the various regional groups and committees, to help continue to advocate for regional projects. And then, one of those regional projects did have some comments on it. This was related to the Bayfront Expressway grade separation, and potential restriction of access to the Bellhaven Neighborhood. And so, staff's recommending right now to keep that project within the TMP, given that it's a large regional project and not being prioritized. Given its scale and complexity, we expect that there'll be lots of opportunity to weigh in on the different design and access options before the project advances in the future. And then, the last two are some implementation comments that the Complete Streets Commission would like to play a role in prioritizing some of the projects to kind of align with the Climate Action Plan. And so, staff's recommending we work with one of the subcommittees of the Commission to help identify projects to include in the next CIP budget year. And then, lastly, there was a comment about including walk audits in the TMP. And so, we are recommending addition to the plan to include walk audits as a citywide project, and this would be to help support the Safe Routes to School Plan. So these next two slides are just a summary of the recommendations that were in the committee's motion. They recommended approval of the Transportation Master Plan, and included some other recommendations, several which I discussed just before this. And then, the Complete Streets Commission recommendations also recommended to approve the Transportation Master Plan with some additional recommendations. They also confirmed the recommendations that the Oversight and Outreach Committee recommended. So finally, after we adopt the Transportation Master Plan, just what would be next? So, staff would start looking at implementing some of the straightforward projects. We would also start working on which tier one projects we would like to include in the next year's CIP budget, as well as the upcoming five years. And then, continue to look for grant opportunities to see how the projects may align with those opportunities. And then, at the end, we do have a process to include new projects into the TMP. As I mentioned earlier, we plan for the TMP to be kind of a living document, and so, we would use the priority strategy framework that I discussed previously to help evaluate new projects, and where they might fit into the TMP. So finally, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt the Transportation Master Plan with the associated changes that were listed in the staff report, based on both the committee and Commission feedback. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. And as I mentioned earlier, Mark Spencer of W-Trans is also available for questions, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Choi, for the presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from Council before we take public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and call for public comment. Ms. Heron?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item C1 regarding adoption of the Transportation Master Plan, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council at this time. This will be the final call for any public comment on item C1, Adoption of the Transportation Master Plan. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. I believe we had one public comment that was attached to our agenda, and I'm not sure if it was posted on CCN. And this one, I believe, we've seen before from the Chair of the Parents for Safe Routes for Menlo Park. So I'm not sure if everybody had an opportunity to look at that. But just wanted to, I believe that a couple of these have been addressed, as far as the walk audits. Ms. Choi, I wasn't sure if you've seen the letter from Bridget Roberts, a resident. I think at least one of these have been implemented into the TMP. So I just wanted to follow up with you if there were any other items in her letter that was addressed. And Ms. Choi, we don't see you on camera. There. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, I did see the letter from this Roberts. Some of the things I think that she's talking about, we would have to talk about how to implement the walk audits, and that's something that we would look to, you know, following the adoption of the TMP. And then, I think she had another comment about hiring of staff, and that would be something that's beyond the scope of the TMP.
Thank you. I appreciate you following up with me on that. And are there any other questions from any other council member on this item? No, I have a follow-up question, and that is on the list of recommendations. And this one, I think you brought up, Ms. Choi, just about, there were some concerns about the restrictions of access into the Bellhaven Neighborhood. And so, I know that you said that we can have input on the design and access options. So if we leave it in here, in the way it's written, what's to ensure that that will happen? That if this comes up, it's a regional project doing grade separation, how do we know for sure that we would have input, or the community would have input, or City Council would have input, or the staff would have input?
Good question. You know, this project would be within the city limits, and we would be a key stakeholder in it. And so, we would definitely be advocating as a stakeholder to be involved in the process throughout.
So the first thought that I had initially is that, wouldn't it just be simpler just to remove it, and then it's no longer a question? But you're recommending that we leave it in, so that's why I'm asking. What would ensure that it would be, that the community's concerns would be addressed? So that's my concern about leaving the language in. And I see Mr. Spencer, not sure if you wanted to follow up on that.
I guess I'm not quite sure what you mean by leaving the language in.
So the recommendation says, since this project is regional and not prioritized, the staff recommends keeping this project in the TMP. And so, the project in the TMP, the way it's written, and I know it says, "While prior project proposals by other agencies had incorporated possible flyovers, the committee reiterated their concern with such modifications, especially with the possible restriction of access to the Bellhaven Neighborhood." So if this is left in this language, wouldn't that project, if the regional project comes forward, wouldn't it limit access or restrictions for getting into the neighborhood, if we leave it in here as it's written?
So the project's not written specifically. I think it's just talked about generally what would need to look like, but the details would still have to be worked out. And I think one of the, this project is one that would help meet some of the goals of the TMP. And so, that's kind of the twofold of why we recommend keeping it in.
Yes, Mr. Spencer?
Madam Mayor, and the City Council, I think also it's important to leave it in, in a sense, to help preserve the city's rights. If the project moves forward on a regional basis, having projects in the TMP signifies to anyone who's looking at the project that this is important in Menlo Park, and needs to be coordinated with Menlo Park. And if it's not in the TMP, the project may still go forward, but then they'll say, "Well, okay, this is not in their TMP, or in some other documentation. We're going to start planning this, and perhaps moving ahead without as much city coordination." This is clearly something that's identified upfront. So projects in the TMP are kind of important from that perspective to be in there, and it does not preclude that the input from public or city staff later on should the project move forward. So it kind of helps preserve some rights, if you want to look at it in that sense.
Well, then, can we add that language? Would it make sense to add that language, then?
I'll look to staff on that, if what's appropriate, for identifying cities' concerns.
Yes, I mean, we can definitely add some language about, you know, making sure that we're, you know, kept into, you know, part of the process. I think if you have specific language that you want to include, to hear that first, and then we can.
Well, I just want to make sure that whatever project, however this project moves forward, that restriction to the neighborhood is not an issue, and that there aren't any flyovers. That's what I would want in there. But I'm also being respectful of the staff's recommendation as to why you want it kept in. So what's the middle ground?
So I think that we could modify the project to mention, you know, with, you know, that flyovers are not preferred, and, you know, minimizing any access restrictions to the Bellhaven Neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. And then, are there any other questions? Actually, I have one more thing, but it's not related to this item. Okay, so I'll just keep going then. There was a, there's a project right now on Pierce Road, where there's an implementation of sidewalks, and also installation of some trees that were donated to the city of Menlo Park. And just thinking about that street, Pierce Road, being a cut-through traffic, a street that's used for cut-through traffic, I spoke with Mr. Murphy about the possibility of turning that street into a one-way, and then also installing a protected bike lane, and having the one-way go away from Willow, so that it wouldn't be used as a cut-through to get to Willow. So, and I'm not sure the process of how to add this to the TMP. And Ms. Choi, I would need your expertise on that. But since the work has already started on that street, I thought this would be a great place to look at how it meets the three or the four priorities of the TMP.
Oh, so we can add it if the Council chooses to include it in their adoption. We could add it to the TMP, and then we would go through the prioritization strategy that I had described earlier, and identify whether it should be a tier one or tier two project. And so then, it can be included in the final TMP.
Okay. Thank you. And just to explain to the rest of the Council, one of my concerns on that street is speed, and then also if it's being used to install a bike lane, is safety, and then also it being a cut-through street when we had a lot of traffic. And so, just thinking about ways to improve the safety on that street. So that's why I'm asking it to be added to the TMP. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I don't have a map in front of me, but is Pierce not the road right at the base of the overpass bridge between, over 101? And so, that actually makes, seems to make a lot of sense to have that there.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the TMP? Councilmember Carlton? You're on mute.
Excuse me. I understand we're going to be using the VMT. Are we also going to be using the grading system together, or eventually is that going to be phased out?
So I think you might be referencing level of service. Is that what you're talking about for the grading system? Yeah, so for the performance metrics for the TMP, we're looking at travel time, as well as VMT as metrics, just in terms of the TMP itself, whether that applies for, the level of service does still apply for development projects.
Okay. Because I think the level of service is easier for people to understand. You can look at an intersection, you can look at a street, say, "Ah, that's an F, that's, you know, an A." Not to say VMT is extraordinarily helpful for what we're trying to achieve, but I just want to make sure that we're not losing the level of service with regard to development impacts as well. Because I, also, I was just going to make a comment that someone that had been very involved in this had made the comment that the TMP is really a big bike plant, to get people out of their cars and moving, and how to make it safer. And I think that, as I've read through the staff report, I think everyone has done a really good job of really addressing complete streets, because we need to make sure, not everyone has the ability to walk or bike. Not everyone can take the buses as they drop kids off to school. And I love the fact that we're making it easier for people to have choices, and have choices that are effective and efficient. And my only prayer is that COVID doesn't impact this too badly before we can see the benefits of this as it gets implemented.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Madam Mayor, if there's no more comments, I'm ready to move adoption.
I'm comfortable with that. Yeah.
Like, it might be a second?
It was just a second, yes. But I would like to include the, what, did you want to state the motion, please?
I was just moving adoption of the TMP per recommendation in the staff report.
So I would like, thank you. I would like to, if, I guess it would be a friendly amendment, include the two changes that, or suggestions that Mayor Taylor made, to include additional language for the Dunbarton Corridor, and also include the Pierce Road.
Sure. Yeah, happy to make those changes, happy to make those amendments.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller, a second by City Councilmember Nash, to adopt the TMP, include the addition of language for the Dunbarton Corridor, and include adding Pierce Road as a one-way bike lane to eliminate cut-through traffic on Willow Road. Are there any further City Council discussion or questions? Seeing none, by vocal votes, and Councilmember Carlton? And Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
And the motion passes to the House.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on the agenda is a report from closed session. Ask our city or interim city attorney Kara Silva to report out from our November 11th meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The council met in closed session regarding a threatened litigation, and there was no reportable action to report out at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation, proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So if any member of the public wishes to speak on item E1, the proclamation for Native American Heritage Month, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. We'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone and you can address the City Council at this. Again, final call for public comment on item E1, our proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as a part of our rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of 1990, designating the month of November as Native American Indian Heritage Month, and now therefore be proclaimed that I, Cecilia Taylor, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November as the National American Indian Heritage Month and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities. The next item on our agenda is item F, which is a study session. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the City Council in the near future. City staff will provide a brief presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the City Council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The City Council will not take an action on items addressed in city in study sessions. The City Council may provide direction to the city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the City Council for action. For this item will be introduced by our Sustainability Manager, Rebecca Lucky, and this item is to provide direction on waste rate smoothing rates, smoothing options for the next five years. Ms. Lucky?
Good evening, Madam Mayor Taylor and councilmembers. Just give me a second to pull up the presentation. Are you able to see my screen?
We can, it's just not on full screen yet.
OK.
Perfect, thank you, Rebecca.
Great. So Rebecca Lucky, Sustainability Manager, here to provide a overview of waste rate smoothing options for the next five years. I also have Mr. Garth Schultz from R3 Consulting, who helped prepare a lot of the options analysis and the various rate models to to look at in order to meet the revenue requirements for delivering waste services for the community. So for tonight, the request of direction from City Council to help staff prepare a recommendation for December 8th, which is when the rates would be adopted in order to have them become effective on January 1st, 2021, to meet our obligations. So that there's three options. One is to use a one time subsidy of a half a million dollars from the solid waste fund balance for 2021. And that is what we've already noticed in our October public noticing, that's a 45 day period before the public hearing on December 8th. And so that is what's been proposed to customers and property owners at this point. So there is on October 13th, when the council approved the notification to customers and property owners, there was a conversation and discussion around the potential of using up to 1.5 million in the solid waste fund balance to perhaps provide additional assistance for the rate increases. And so that is number option number two, which is a five year subsidy totaling 1.5 million dollars. So that would use the fund balance in the solid waste fund. And then option number three is basically the same as option number two, except there would be no subsidy provided for commercial rate increases in 2021. And so I'll walk through these options just to highlight the differences a little bit more. So option number one, again, that's what was already noticed to customers in October, and that is the one time use of a half a million dollars in subsidies. So these were mailed out last month, and it reduces only rates for 2021. And that reduces rates for all customers, including commercial. And you're probably thinking, why commercial? Because we're trying to recover cost of service for small cart customers. Well, there are some commercial customers, mainly multifamily, that have smaller carts. And there are increases for organics and recycling. The recycling increases are very small, and organics, again, is is not a a large increase. But it's, again, to get full cost of recovery for all of the services. So this option really involves no rate subsidy for years 2022 through 2025. And so the table that's shown here, you'll notice that the largest rate jumps occur in 2021 and 2022. So customers with 20 and 32 gallons will see an increase of about $8 per month. And small carts for the remaining years will see about a $4 increase per month. Option number two, the five year subsidy to spread out the solid waste fund balance over five years, which is 1.5 million, would reduce 2021 increases for all customers again. So that includes the commercial customers. And it also really hones in on supporting smoothing rates for the 20 and 30 gallon residential customers from 2022 to 2025. And so with the table that's shown here, you'll see that there are no large jumps. They're all equally about 550 per month in increases over over the next five years. And option number three, which would be a no subsidy for commercial in 2021, this would smooth rates for 20 and 32 gallon customers, again, the small cart customers for for five years. And it does bring down that monthly increase, but it's not a whole lot. It's basically 20 cents. So that would be removing all the commercial subsidy for all of the years, and that would give about $250,000 back to the smaller cart customers. And again, it's a 20 cent difference from what is originally already proposed from option two. So just in a slide here on the comparison of all the alternatives between 30, the small carts, 20 and 32 gallon, which is a majority of the residential customers. So again, option one, the highlighted boxes really show that there is that the jump of $8 per month, while all the others show about a $5 increase per month, 550 or 530. So just to summarize, the request of direction is to help staff to prepare the recommendation on December 8th and on December 8th and look at what council would like staff to bring back as far as, again, option one is what's currently being proposed, and that's an $8 month increase in 2021 and 2022 and $4 for the remaining years were option number two, which is using the 1.5 million over five years and see and customers, small cart customers would see an increase of 550 per month. And then option number three would have no subsidy at all for any commercial increases in waste rates. And that would help smaller cart customers see a lesser increase in option number two by 20 cents. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Thank you. I'll go back to the previous slide so you can look at it.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation, Ms. Lucky. Are there any clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So the the purpose of this is to actually get to Prop 218, where we actually need to be fully, there shouldn't be any subsidies for any of the rates. Is that correct? And at what point is that going to happen? Because I noticed that with different rates, we still have different amounts at the end of the five years. What is the what are the requirements?
So the original intent when council adopted a new rate model in 20 for 2018 through 2020 was to have a smooth transition of of rates so that all customers are paying for the actual cost of service. And with this model, these different options proposed, it's still anticipated that we would meet that 10 year span to work with these rates to smooth them and achieve full cost recovery for all customers by 2028. And so we're still on track. I would just probably add the only element or risk that could happen is if you're using the more smoother transition with the 1.5 million between 2025 and 2026, there could be, again, a larger jump than $5. But we haven't analyzed that far down the road, and we probably wouldn't recommend it because it is too far ahead. But that that is one of the risks. So you might see a larger jump again in in one of the other years after 2025.
And where did the reserve funds come from, which we will be using?
Yes, so the 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 solid waste fund balance is really an accumulation of unspent funds for recycling programs and also construction and demolition forfeited permits, so penalties. So if a permit applicant didn't meet their 50 or 65% diversion, then they have to forfeit some of their deposit. And so the fund has accumulated some of the those monies in that way.
And do we anticipate that the fund will continue to grow? Or is this the 1.5 million all that we have to work with?
The funds, yeah, the funds generally not intended to grow. I mean, we want people to meet their recycling requirements for C and D and to utilize the program funding that's needed for recycling or waste administration programs in the city. So no, it's it's not intended to keep growing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton? You're on mute.
Sorry about that. So the money came from fines, fees, from from where else? Can you review that with me again, just a sec?
So from unspent expenditures, just from this, the solid waste and recycling program. So a portion of of the fees collected through the waste rates goes to funding sustainability programs that promote recycling or, you know, administering the franchise agreement with Recology and working with the SBWMA.
Why is that going to stop?
It's not going to stop. It's just not going to grow.
Right, but there's still going to be those those monies will still come in because that's part of our contract.
Right.
We'll still have that money coming in. And then what was the other things? Fees, impact fees?
It's construction and demolition, so forfeited deposits. But now we have a penalty system, so there would be fines or penalties associated if if a permit applicant didn't meet their construction and demolition requirements.
Right, so that money would be coming in. So there is still money coming in with this. And and the the thing that kind of primarily hit me with with where a lot of this money comes from is how how we decide to charge people, as we see right here, is is part science, part art. And we always charge a little bit more than we think it's going to be because we want to pad it out as it goes through. So people have been overcharged very slightly, but they have been overcharged through the years because we want to make sure that we have the the ability to to pad this as it goes through. And through many years on, we've seen it that automatically be padded without it going to rate increases. And so I don't know how much is from from each of the buckets that go in there, but a good portion of this money is money that the residents have been charged to go into a fund to do exactly this, to to smooth the amount. So I just wanted to kind of make that clarification. There's there's a lot of a lot of different ways that this is going in, but I I don't see that the money is suddenly going to stop because we're continuing to do all the the things that feed into it. Am I not understanding that?
Well, I think I I just need a little bit more clarification on whether we're talking about the are we talking about the fund balance itself, the solid waste fund balance? Where? Or are we talking about the rates themselves that?
But we will always have a balance because we're it's not completely flat how people are charged. And we always charge slightly overs, you know, correctly so to to make sure that through the years it is balanced, that it that it does pick up the the differences in the charges as they come up.
Yeah, and I would just offer that not all customers are being some customers are, and that's why we're trying to look at the rates in a way, and that's what the City Council has looked at over the last three years to try to ensure that rates are being charged accordingly to each customer. So some are paying a little bit more, some are not paying less. And and that's where we're seeing with the small cart customers is that there is a deficiency in the actual cost to service a 20 gallon or a 32 gallon.
Every year on the SBWMA, we get a report that says this is the actual cost, and this is the the money that's come in. And it generally tends to balance. Sometimes it's a little more, sometimes it's a little less unless something Herculean happens, like China decides to stop taking all of our recycling or, you know, some of the the major hits that we've had in this area, which has been really frustrating that they've all kind of happened at the same time. So if if I could respond to that question, I I think the modeling assumes that's been used for the rates that all of the revenues coming in will be offset by the expenditures. So I mean, there's always some fluctuation in modeling, but the intention is zero net gain so that there wouldn't be any additional or residual funds at the end of every year. OK, well, that might be new because that's the way we've done it in the past. And and to Betsy's question, that's where a lot of the money came from. People have been paying into this fund, and this fund has been used for the past, what, six years I've been on the board, to help smooth the inconsistencies that happen naturally in dealing with all these.
I have a follow up question in in that, or maybe it's clarifying, Ms. Lucky. So option one and two are have a subsidy for commercial increases, but option three doesn't. OK, thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, thanks. Sorry if these questions have been answered and I missed. When it comes to the subsidy from this this fund balance, what's the total amount currently in there? Is is the 1.5 million the the total amount of available funds in this balance? Or is that figure larger at the moment?
So what's available for for the subsidy is 1.5, but in the fund, there is about 2.5 available. But so there's an amount that's needed to sustain the the administration of the programs this year. And again, given that sometimes there's fluctuations in waste revenues. And again, given that sometimes there's fluctuations in waste revenues, there's usually another kind of backup just in case. And so that's why it's recommended that 1.5 in the fund balance be used for for the subsidy.
Because these monies are generally used for these these other programs that that you've
Yes.
You've, okay, great.
Are there any follow-up questions before we go to public comment? Okay, Ms. Heron, can you take public comment at this time on this item, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F1 regarding providing direction on waste rate smoothing options for the next five years, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the city council at this time. This will be the final call for public comment on item F1 regarding direction on waste rate smoothing for the next five years. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, we may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I have one more follow-up question for Ms. Lucky. And so the 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 difference between option one and two and three is $1 million, right? And so then, like, if we make a determination to go with the cheaper option, the 500,000, what happens to that $1 million? Or is it just sits in the fund? Because you've already determined that it's it's not needed for these programs. And so is there any other sort of, you know, is in theory, there's anything else that happens to that $1 million or just provides a cushion in that fund?
So nothing else would happen. It would it would remain in the fund. Potentially could be used for future years if there are other issues, as Councilmember Carlton mentioned, with, you know, differences in recycling markets and other unforeseen circumstances.
Thank you.
But just one, and another, sorry, is one other option for dealing with those unforeseen circumstances? Would, could it be rate increases, or are we stuck with these rate increases for for this this five years? So like, if there is some scenario where markets that took recyclables shut down, and all of a sudden everything becomes more more expensive, is is there a valve for us to then, and let's say, since we've used all of, we've used this extra $1 million, is there a valve then to go back and increase rates to to make up for that that changing market circumstance?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I mean, can you one more time go through the what you see as the benefits and costs of just doing residential versus doing residential and commercial or multifamily, including multifamily?
Right, so excluding, I'll share my screen again here. Can you see it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so the, so Councilmember Nash, are you looking for the difference between number two and number three or all?
I guess I was looking for how if how one thinks about doing all customers or only residential.
Yeah, so the the 500,000, a half a million that we've noticed includes the subsidy for both residential customers and commercial. And it largely impacts the commercial customers who have smaller carts, which is mainly multifamily. So it's it's your smaller multifamily developments that maybe have four units and they each maybe have individual carts. And Recology, and the way the franchise agreement is classed or written, is that they're considered commercial. And so it does help in that sense for multifamily who have smaller carts. And then there is the other element of organics and and commercial, I'm sorry, commercial organics and recycling that have had increases as well. You know, not, they've been pretty nominal for recycling. It's about $5 a month right now for a for servicing a three cubic yard bin. And so the cost is is going up up to $10 over the next five years. And so that helps with the 2021 rates. I mean, when it's broken down between the 500,000, it half of it's going to the residential customers, mostly the small cart customers, and then the other half is going to the commercial. But when we looked at between option number one, I'm sorry, number two and number three, when you take out the 250,000 for commercial, it 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 doesn't make a huge impact on seeing decreases on the monthly rates for for small cart residential customers. The difference that they see then is is 20 cents. So it is nominal in that sense.
Can you say that one more time, please?
The the whole thing or just between option two and number three?
Between option two and number three. So it's just, well, actually, I guess I can see it's just the 20 cents. Can you put up the slide where you had all of the numbers again, please? Thank you.
Did you want me to walk through it one more time?
Very honestly, since we didn't have any of this information beforehand, it would be helpful to just have a look at it, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, so option number one, so we'll look at the 20 gallon. And so our current monthly rate is is $22.81. And so if in the, if we go with what's been noticed and use the $500,000, these smaller cart customers are going to see about an $8 increase from where it is currently to 2021, and then another in 2022. But after that, it'll be a $4 increase every year. So in that sense, you're you're getting to full cost of service quicker using option number one. Whereas option number two, it's it's still that longer transition over that 10-year period that we started in 2018, where it is it's it's delaying that full cost of service. And so option number two still includes the 500,000 that helps commercial in 2021, as I mentioned. And the small cart customers will see a $5.50 increase per month throughout all the years. And then when you look at number, option number three, like, if you just look at 2020, two, there isn't very much, it's it's a matter of cents, really, between number two and number three, when you remove the commercial subsidy. Does that help?
Just really quickly, it seems like there there is also this phantom option four, where you essentially like keep the 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 reduction that you, the the maximum reduction for 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 residential, but don't give any reduction to commercial, right? And and so then, and that would be like, what, 1.2 million or something like that? Because that that reduction for for commercial is is what, 300,000 or 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 something along those lines? And so then, then then that's more, so so you could achieve, essentially, you could achieve option two with 1.2 million and not 1.5 million, in theory, correct? Of course, the the missing element would be the the reduction for 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 commercial. Not not to complicate the the options here. But but if, you know, if if there was a policy determination that that there was a desire not to provide the break for for commercial, there is, you you know, there is the option of of saving, you know, $300,000 and keeping it in the fund and and residential still having essentially what is the the maximum impact.
Yes.
And is commercial, everything from the multifamily to the small business to our large corporations, that's, we're putting everybody into that non-residential bucket when we're talking about subsidies? And would the subsidies be spread across all of those customers of the, in on the commercial side? Or is there any way to target multifamily and small business? Realizing that that would then have to be defined, but just theoretically.
Yes, but I mean, that is possible if you want to just focus on the small cart commercial customers, which are the multifamily, and not provide a subsidy for the organics and commercial for the larger customers.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
Yes, thank you, Councilmembers Garth Schultz with our three consulting group. Just to answer Councilmember Nash's question, the the 500,000, it's included in the rates that were noticed, is only offsetting the difference between rates that are below cost of service. Larger corporations with larger subscription levels are already at or above cost of service, so they're not receiving that subsidy. The subsidy in the notice rates in option one for commercial is for the smaller cart and container customers, and as Rebecca noted, also recycling and organics customers. So it is kind of already geared towards the multifamily and small business sector as as noticed.
Thank you. That's very helpful. So could you put up the options again that we had, please?
Sure. Is it coming through?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So the my question is on option two, well, on option one, then we pay, we're putting point five, we're putting half a million of the one and a half million into 2021, leaving the other million in reserve. And we're saying that by choosing this, we're saying we are not going to be using that million for future years, or we still have a choice to use it for for future years till till 2025?
You would still have a choice to use them in in future years. We would need to come back to council and and get that, obviously, our authorization. If that's the direction of council, if you wanted to have a check-in.
And then that five-year subsidy totaling 1.5 million, essentially, you're just spreading that out over the 1.5 million over five years among all customers?
It's not for all customers. It's only, it's only for all customers in 2021, and then it's just for the small cart customers in 2022, 2025.
Okay, and then for option three, could you review again what is the residential? So it's no subsidy for commercial and is this subsidy over totaling 1.5 million over the five years?
Yeah, so it's using 1.5 million only for the small cart customers.
Thank you.
Better residential.
And Ms. Lucky, just to follow up on Vice Mayor Combs' comment earlier, and that is, is there an option for?
Using 1.2 million for small cart residential, that's how I understood it from Councilmember Combs. Yes, that that is something that we could analyze further and be prepared to bring back on December 8.
And just to follow up on Vice Mayor Combs' comment, and I did not read all of the comments that we got on on CCN, but we did, I believe there is actually a petition circulating on Nextdoor about raising rates. And just wanted to find out if you've read any of that feedback, and if you have, what your thoughts are. Because I I think our residents are concerned about increase in rates. And just looking at, looking at one of the charts, rates going from $22.81 a month to $49.31 a month. So I just wanted to find out if you've read any of those comments and what your thoughts were.
Yeah, so I've read the, so we've received letters of protest from property owners, and I've received emails and some calls, and I am aware of a petition going around as well. And the feedback that I've seen is, is, I think, a lot of customers are struggling with the idea of, you know, if I'm throwing away less, why am I having to to pay more? And the other customers are not experiencing an increase. And it's it's a challenging position to kind of talk through with a customer. And that the ones that I have talked to seem to understand that there is, you know, to to pick up the cart, it costs the same as picking up a 20 gallon as it does a 96 gallon. There's no difference for Recology's cost. I mean, there is a difference in if you throw away less, there's a little bit less tipping fee in the rates that are proposed, still reflect that, still reflects that there it costs a customer less to have a 20 gallon or a 32 gallon than a 96 gallon cart. But unfortunately, due to changes in Prop 218 and the way cities can incentivize, which is what I think customers are still looking for, is not possible anymore under your Proposition 218. And I I think that's where they're struggling to see that.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky. Councilmember Mueller?
And I'm sorry, and I just, I was sorry, I will add just one other element, too, is is it is, you know, when you're when you're looking at percentages between the carts from 2021 to 25, I mean, they they look very large, but when you're looking at the dollar amounts and the amount that is paid for that service for a 20 gallon or 32 gallon. In our last staff report, we did show other communities, and Menlo Park, with the proposed rates for under option one, are coming in the average with the Bay Area rates for for this kind of service. And so and and a lot of other cities are, again, struggling with the same issue of removing the incentive for smaller carts and charging for full cost recovery for small carts.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
So, Ms. Lucky, I apologize if you already stated this. I may ask you to state it again if you have, and if you haven't. I'm appreciative for the answer. What would the cost be to the city in terms of subsidy for no rate increase?
So for no rate increase, we have not looked at that that option.
Yeah, so what would, I think?
But it would be, you know, I would say we we were trying to look at different options even beyond 1.5 million. You know, for, and I could say, for example, for a $3 million, if we had $3 million, the increase would still be about $4.25 per month for a customer. So you're looking well over $3 million to try to have no increases over the next five years? I don't, if you're looking at one year, that's a different story. That's where we're at.
I think that number is actually important to have. Because I think what's happened, what happens to the consumer in this case is they think, well, why are they raising my rates? Why, you know, why do my rates have to go up? And if you turn to the consumer and you say, well, look, if we don't, the city is going to have to pay 40 million bucks, let's say, or or 25 million bucks, and we don't have 25 million bucks. It's the, it's the end, it's sort of the end of the argument. And so that's why that number is important, even though that we we all can surmise, based on what we've seen here, the reasonableness of what we need to do, to have the full picture to explain to the public, I think, is important in this case because the consumer is thinking in their head, I haven't done anything different. Why are you raising it? And it's the magnitude of what happens if we don't, and what that means for the rest of our city services is the answer. So it'd be great if we could, if if that could, I know it can't be calculated tonight, but if it's somehow that that could be calculated in the coming days, that'd be, I think, going to be a very important piece of information to communicate to the public.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mueller. It's noted, and and I think we can work on what that number looks like in preparation for December 8.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so I I mean, I just, I I'm inclined to go with either option two or option three. I mean, if if the money is there, in theory, as as Councilmember Carlton might outlined, the money is there in theory for for scenarios like this. I see no reason necessarily to keep the additional $1 million if we feel that, like, under our best estimate, the other programs that are funded through this this source can continue to be funded. I would welcome to, I I don't, at this moment, have a particular preference whether
commercial is included or excluded, and so I'd actually like to hear from my colleagues if they do have a strong opinion on whether, on whether we should make this exclusive of just residential properties or also include commercial.
Councilmember Carlton?
Betsy, would you like to go first? My only thought on that, I'm, I don't feel very strongly either way, except that when we talk about commercial, it's, it's not Safeway, it's the people that own the apartment store. And I worry that, I don't like giving anyone an excuse to raise rents. And I don't want to cause any further pressure on how much people are having to pay for their homes. So that's, that's my only consideration in including the commercial, but I'm not hugely passionate either way.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash.
Well, I had a similar sentiment, just my concern is whatever we can do for the small business owners and also for people living in multifamily living situations, buildings, that, you know, I think there's a lot of financial hardship out there. And so I would, I agree with the five-year subsidy totaling the 1.5, you know, going for spending that entire amount over the five years. It's, and I don't have a strong opinion which way to, to go on the commercial.
Pardon me, Mayor Taylor. I just wanted to make another clarification, just to help between option number two and number three. And so for option number three, we would have to re-notice the Prop 218 notice for commercial customers if we weren't going to provide the subsidy. And so we would have to come back to council early next year to do that. So they would receive the subsidy up until council approves another kind of increase for them. So I just want to kind of provide that other piece of information to you as you're, you're weighing through these.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Nash, did you have your hand up?
I did, so, thank you, yeah, thank you for that, and just to clarify, so the five-year subsidy, option number two, was only providing a subsidy for commercial for the first year, and then it was, okay, I would certainly support that then. Rather than go through the effort and also having people who have counted on this and make any changes at this point, I would, I would go for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller.
So is anyone against option two?
No.
No, make a motion.
Pardon, again, Mayor Taylor. We're seeking direction, so you don't necessarily need a motion, right? This hearing, I'm sorry to take your.
No, 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 steal my thunder, no, that's fine, no, no motion is required, as this is a study session, we're just looking for direction. The record shows that the city council is requesting staff to explore option two to present at the December 8 city council meeting.
And also, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Mueller, but you also suggested having the information about what it looks like if we don't increase. And Mr. Schultz?
I can provide that answer right now, Mayor Taylor. For 2021 only, if you were not to increase rates, it would be about a $1.7 million shortfall. And that would be across the board, so not just for residential, but if you were not to adjust any rates, keep your current 2020 rates, carry forward into 2021, given the projected expenses, you'd be $1.7 million short of the revenue requirement for SBW MA and Recology in 2021.
Councilmember Nash?
So, excuse me, Mr. Schultz, when you say we'd be 1.7 million short, is that in addition to the 1.5 million that we currently have in the fund?
No, that's just to state that that would be the shortfall that you would have to recover either via fund subsidy, such as the 1.5 in the fund, or by carrying it forward into future rate years, so it's not inclusive of use of any fund reserves.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs?
I'll just add in, not to put words in his mouth, but I think Councilmember Mueller would want that figure, like, over like five years, right? I mean, and obviously, don't, don't, don't need that tonight, because it's not like, right, it's not 1.5 times five, I know, because the rate increases are different, but I think Councilmember Mueller was looking for the full impact of that figure being known to residents, and and we know it's certainly not 1.5 million dollars.
I will concur.
Councilmember Nash?
Wouldn't there also be an issue that we would be getting further and further out of compliance with Prop 218, which would create issues?
I believe that's a question for Ms. Lucky or Ms. Silver.
I think both of us would concur that, yes, it is kicking the can down the road in terms of eliminating the cross subsidy that has been going on for a while.
Ms. Lucky? Since we're giving you direction, we're in a study session, do you have enough?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor and councilmembers. Appreciate that.
Well, we're so excited to talk about solid waste. That we went through that study session pretty quickly, it's about just after 6:20. Wanted to follow up with council to make sure we want a dinner, or do we want to just keep moving along? Any preference?
I'm happy to keep going.
Councilmember Mueller?
I'm good, whatever you guys want to do, it's all good.
I don't care.
Vice Mayor Combs, Councilmember Nash, if you have a preference, keep going, take a dinner break.
I'm, I'm fine with whatever.
Okay, okay, so we will move on. The next item on the agenda, item G, our commissioner reports. Item G1 is the 2020-2021 Housing Commission Work Plan. To introduce this item is our housing chair, Ms. Karen Grove and Ms. Wendy McPherson.
This is Karen, and I'm going to introduce and I'm going to share the presentation with Wendy. So, thank you, I'm Karen Grove, I'm currently the chair of the Housing Commission. And I want to first acknowledge that we are a diverse group of commissioners and we're working really well together and came to a really good, strong convergence on this plan. So I want to thank my fellow commissioners, Lauren Bigelow, Curtis Conroy, Rachel Horst, Wendy McPherson, Nevada Merriman, and John Pimentel. I also especially want to thank, and our staff, of course, Rhonda Kaufman and Mike Noche. And I also especially want to thank Lauren, who served on the, an ad hoc committee with me to flesh out some of the details after the commission arrived at consensus. And then I would like to turn it over to Commissioner McPherson, who will give sort of the overview of the plan.
Hello, good evening, city councilmembers. We on the Housing Commission believe that we have set out a work plan focusing on three high-impact issues that are most relevant to the public we serve. The first high-impact project we are looking to focus on is the now-available statewide guidelines for ADUs. We hope to promote the guidelines and make them easier to understand citywide. Basically, we want to break the process down to step-by-step guides for all communities to understand and utilize. The second high-impact project is to seek out programs and partnerships to preserve naturally affordable housing, such as community land trusts. The third high-impact project is to continue to advocate and seek out ways to get affordable housing in West and Central Menlo, near mass transit. Having laid out these three projects, we also plan to utilize a balanced financial approach in keeping with shortfalls the city is facing. I want to also add that there are other projects that are not on our plan, and that doesn't mean they're not important. One issue specifically is what could be COVID-related foreclosures and evictions in the near future. We plan to keep a close eye on this issue. So now I turn it back over to Commissioner Chair Karen Grove to further color, add color to these projects, thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. So I just thought I would walk through the plan to make sure, you know, we talked through all of, all of the specifics without going too far into detail. One thing I want to know, and we could go to the next slide, or the next page of the plan, is that we really did look at the recommendations from the Facebook study and the Y-Plan recommendations in particular. And if you'll see on this plan, all the items that are highlighted in green are related to the Y-Plan recommendation. So I would say almost everything in this plan was recommended by Y-Plan. I believe they may have recommended some things that aren't in this plan, but everything that we have done is related, it agrees with their recommendations and is informed by. And I think some of the things we may not have done, had it not been for their recommendation, so I do really appreciate that report. So on the ADUs, we not only want to streamline and communicate about the process, but we also, well, we need to comply, we've already done that, and we've used a grant to do some of that work, so regarding financial stability. We also want to apply, make sure that even people with low income can build an ADU, so we would like to even provide some of our BMR funds to support our lower-income residents in building ADUs. And not just building new ones, but also bringing existing ADUs into compliance and making them healthy. That's just a little bit on the ADUs. On the community land trust, that's actually related to the financial crisis we're in, and it is a way to react to the possibility of foreclosures and, and potentially to, well, once, once a property is in a community land trust, there's unlikely to be evictions. So that's also reactive to the moment we're in and a long-term solution. These first two items are sort of near-term outcomes that we hope to accomplish. And the ADU item is something that will require staff resources in 2021. The community land trust item is likely to be more of a commissioner, research, and ad hoc committee effort and presentation by providers to the commission and to the public. So in terms of the resources, we're sort of focused on ADU, staff resource. The staff will focus on ADUs in the coming year, possibly setting up some work on community land trust in the following years. And then the third item is the increased affordable housing near, in West and Central Menlo Park. And I wanted to point out that we specifically put into the plan that that should include extremely low-income affordability. That is definitely a strong recommendation from the Y-Plan youth in the Facebook study. And I believe it's in alignment with the housing element's requirements to affirmatively further fair housing. So this is a longer-term effort, and it is going to happen in the housing element process. So in terms of resources, it's something we have to do anyway, and it's going to be spread out over a few years. And then the next sort of row talks about identifying sites for that affordable housing and goes into a little detail there. I did want to point to some of the administrative staff strategies, such as updating our NOFA, Notice of Funds Available. One of the things we've heard over and over is that it would be very nice if our NOFA were available over the counter and not just once a year. So we have done that, and actually, you have an informational item later in your meeting today, letting you know that the NOFA will be issued tomorrow with that change, and with the change that would allow for BMR funds to be used to make ADUs affordable, should somebody apply to do that. So we've allowed for programs to apply for funds. The program could be a loan program to first-time home buyers, it could be a program to start a CLT and acquire properties and permanently de-restrict them. I may be going into a little too much detail, but we've definitely opened up the possibilities for our NOFA. And finally, we want to do extensive, and we need to do extensive, community engagement, we need to get better at that. And so that's going to be a focus as well. And a particular, I think this actually came from the community, I'm sure the Y-Plan youth would agree, but particularly doing outreach that is accessible to monolingual Spanish speakers, I think is important in reaching the people who are most impacted by the housing crisis in our community. So I think that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer questions, and I know Rhonda is here as well.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for coming on camera, I appreciate it.
I have the color, literally.
Are there any follow-up questions? Councilmember Carlton?
I have a, I have a comment. I love, I'm sorry, I look over here because I take notes on the side. I really like what you're doing with NOFA, we needed more flexibility. And I like the grants for more low-income homes to provide ADUs, and I like that because we've already seen people living in garages, it's wonderful to be able to provide them the funding to bring those up to code and make them proper ADUs. But also, you might have people that are very cash restricted, maybe they're elderly, and it gives them a way of making a living to survive better themselves and while helping someone else. So I think that's fantastic, thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
I just want to express how much I appreciate the Housing Commission's work on this, there's a lot of thought that went into this, it's, this is really good, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other follow-up questions on the Housing Commission's work plan?
Send our regards to everyone and thank them.
Yes, thank you, I have a, I have a follow-up question, and that is, is the Housing Commission working with the Planning Commission at all specifically about the ADUs that may be, that may need to be brought up to code?
I'm going to let Rhonda answer that, because I know she's been working on coming into compliance with the new state laws. Hopefully, technology is friendly, there she is.
Okay.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Yes, there is an intent for there to be some joint work on that. I believe, I believe the Planning Commission already formed a subcommittee and is doing some work, and I think it's more related to the zoning. The Housing Commission will be focusing more on the navigation tools, but there's definitely opportunity in the future for them to work together on those efforts.
Thank you. Okay, there any other questions? Okay, Ms. Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G1, 2020-2021 Housing Commission Work Plan, 2021 Housing Commission Work Plan, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. So our first speaker will be Kevin Chan. Kevin, you are off mute, and I'd like to address the city council. You may unmute yourself now. Kevin, you should see a red microphone on the top right side of your screen. Go ahead and click that, you'll be unmuted, and you'll have the opportunity to address the city council. Kevin, are you able to unmute your end? I do apologize, it's Ken, not Kevin.
Oh, hello. Then, I can't, I am able to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. Go right ahead.
Sorry for the makeup, for the mix-up. Hello, members of the Menlo Park City Council. I first like to thank you for your continued leadership and guidance as we endure this pandemic together. I'd also like to thank staff and the Housing Commission for all their hard work in putting together the current work plan that is under consideration. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm an organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with our communities and leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes throughout San Mateo County. On behalf of HLC, I would like to extend our support of the Housing Commission's goal of creating more affordable housing in Menlo Park, especially in the neighborhoods west of 101, Middlefield Road, and of El Camino Real. One way to achieve this goal would be to allow for a more open process for affordable housing developers to apply for funds through the city. This would not only encourage more developers to apply, but also foster greater trust between our residents and city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, for your public comment. I'm going to apologize for mispronouncing your name initially. So this will be the final call for any public comments on item G1 regarding Housing Commission 2020, 2021 Work Plan. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may...
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for the public comment. And on this item, do we need to vote on it? It's just a report?
Correct. It's just a report out from the commission. No formal action is needed unless the city...
Okay, thank you, Ms. Heron. And thank you, Ms. Grove and Ms. McPherson for your presentation and the work that you're doing on our Housing Commission. The next Commissioner report is going to be from our Environmental Quality Commission, item G2. And it is their quarterly, quarterly report and a recommendation for implementing climate action plan strategies 2, 4, and 6. And to introduce this item is the Commission Chair, Ryan Price.
Mayor Taylor, I do apologize for the interruption. I provided council with inaccurate information. We will need to do a vote and motion and a second to approve the Housing Commission proposed work plan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Heron.
So moved.
I have the first by City Councilmember Carlton, and the second by City Councilmember Nash to approve the Housing Commission Work Plan. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing one by both all votes. Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes as you may. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to item G2, the Environmental Quality Commission's report. And to present this item is the, the Chair, and that is Ms. Ryan Price.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. And I think we have our slides that the staff were going to share, I believe. Perfect, thank you. So, thank you all for having us to join you this evening. My name is Ryan Price. I'm the Chair of the Environmental Quality Commission, and we're also going to be joined by, oh, I will share my webcam. Sorry about that. Okay. So we're also going to be joined by Commissioner Gaylord as well when we get to that point in that presentation. So again, just like the Housing Commission, hopefully, the technology will be friendly to us at that time. So we, we wanted to walk you through a few things. This is both our quarterly update and an introduction to a recommendation that we're going to be making. So one of the things we're going to do is review what we've done. We'd like to raise some of the community concerns that have come before us, just to make sure you're aware of those. And then we have a couple of areas, including the CAP items 2, 4, and 6, where we're going to be asking for some guidance from you all. So we can move to the next slide. And the next slide. Thank you. So obviously, this year, the EQC has been focused on the Climate Action Plan and just climate action in general. And one of the things that we've experienced during the pandemic is just, we feel even more strongly that through advanced and thorough planning at a local level, we can do so much to negate the potential impact of climate change in our community. And as we've experienced during this pandemic, that advanced planning and thinking those things through seem to have a lot, have a lasting impact on the community. So as was indicated in our work plan, there are two areas of focus that we've been focused on this year, the Climate Action Plan and the Urban Canopy. The Climate Action Plan does reflect the majority of our time and investment, although we have heard, obviously, all of the appeals that have come forward, as well as approved the new guidelines for the Heritage, from the Heritage Tree Task Force. And we were in the middle of planning our bidet when it was canceled due to COVID, and then it was preliminarily rescheduled as a virtual event, only to be postponed until there's a better time when it could be in person. So we've had a busy year, and the city has taken on, and you all have endorsed, a number of the EQC's recommendations, which we deeply appreciate. And we've heard from the community that that's also deeply appreciated. This done, you know, ranges from the bold Climate Action Plan of Net Zero by 2030 to adopting the actual CAP plan during a challenging economic time. And most recently, the, the recommendation that we've put forward on the multifamily EV charging, which I think has come before you, but... Could we go back in the slides? Sorry, thank you. So, again, we really appreciate all of the support, and we, what we've heard from the community is the community is quite appreciative as well. We would like to see further action by the city to address the challenges of climate change, and this is particularly true around the sense of urgency. There's a strong sense of urgency on the commission and within some members of the community as well. But we do appreciate and know that Menlo Park is benefiting from the actions that have been taken up to this point. And next, I would like to share, so we can go to the next slide, some of the themes of the community concerns that have been brought before us. So the first is, just like what I was saying, we have heard from community members in two regards, addressing climate change. The first is that people have been excited about what the city is doing, and at the same time, they express a high level of concern for the urgency at which the climate issues are moving, and how can the city keep pace with those issues? Secondly, there, there is a concern around equity and affordability regarding the potential, the potential policy decisions that Menlo Park could make, and just wanting to make sure that, that these opportunities or these decisions don't, you know, create an inequitable situation or create affordability challenges for our, our members of our community. In addition to that, we've had a lot of people who are interested in volunteering, and we know that that is outside the scope of the EQC, and we've discussed it with the city clerk, but I, we wanted to make sure that you all knew that we've had a number of people come forward to express their interest in volunteering for the city regarding climate change. And we continue to hear from community members about concerns regarding gas-powered leaf blowers. It is our understanding that this issue is being taken on, or at least pre-COVID was being taken on, with the Air Quality Board for the region. But we have still had some comments about gas-powered leaf blowers. And finally, heritage trees. So obviously, Menlo Park is a heritage tree city. Trees hold a very special place in our hearts. And specifically, after the 1,000 El Camino project, we've had people asking us how the replacement program is going. And we are scheduled to have an official update from Christian in January to answer some of those questions. We've also heard from community members about the balance between focus on heritage trees and focus on climate change for the commission itself. And there's definitely thoughts on, on both sides of that, but that's been something that people have talked to us about as well. So that's a summary of the public comments we've received so far in 2020. We can go to the next slide. And now we come to the areas where we're seeking guidance. So first, I'm going to ask the question about the pesticide ban because Josie is going to join us to present out on items 2, 4, and 6. So when we did our last update, we ended up feeling a little confused, and this is, this is our, our area of confusion, because at the time, a couple of council members asked us to look at and get involved in pesticides, but we realized when we went back to the commission that it wasn't actually part of our work plan, and we realized it wasn't an official council vote. So we weren't confident that we could take action at the time. So we wanted to understand, given the priorities, is, is a focus on a pesticide ban something that you all would like to see the EQC focusing on? And is there kind of an official recommendation from council? So that's one of the things that we were hoping to learn tonight from you, are your sentiments around the pesticide ban and the EQC spending time to look at pesticides. And the second area that we're seeking guidance, and this relates to what Josie will present on, are items 2, 4, and 6 from the CAP. So these items were not a part of the section that was approved for staff time. And again, the urgency of climate change is really poignant for people, both on the commission and in the community. And so the commissioners were seeking a way in which we could move these items forward without drawing on staff resources to the greatest extent possible. And so the commission worked together and has put together the proposal that Josie is going to share to address that. But it, I think what it shows you is that overall, one of the things we're also seeking guidance from is the level of involvement that commissioners are looking to have on taking the CAP and, and making action steps out of that CAP recommendation. So without further ado, I will turn the presentation over to Josie.
Good evening, council members. Can everybody hear me? Okay, great. So Ryan gave good context. These are all actions that were officially approved by the council with the Climate Action Plan in July, but that were not available to be staffed during this fiscal year due to the COVID budget crisis. So with CAP actions 2, 4, and 6, and quick recap, 2 is related to setting a, actually, we'll, we'll get into it in a second. So what we're recommending is that due to the urgency of climate change, that the city council empower city commissions to advance these three actions until staff resources are freed up. At that time, commissions would then hand off responsibility for these actions just as soon as staff is available and ready to, to take them over. And we have a detailed plan. We were asked, this is something that actually council considered in July when the CAP was passed, but staff wanted, requested some time to look at what might be required of staff in supporting the commissions to move forward on these actions. So the EQC looked at this, worked with staff, and came up with a detailed recommendation, again, the purpose of which was to avoid using staff resources and time. Next slide. Okay, so quick background. Council approved working staff to work on actions 1, 3, and 5, and to delay 2, 4, and 6. Action 2 is to set a citywide goal for increasing EVs and decreasing gasoline sales. Action 4 is reducing VMT in the city by 25% or an amount recommended by the Complete Streets Commission. So that goal hasn't been sort of officially set or adopted yet. And number 6 is to develop a climate adaptation plan to protect the community from sea level rise and flooding. Next slide. So our recommendation for CAP action 2, which was to set a citywide goal for increasing EVs and decreasing gasoline sales, is that the council empower the EQC and a nonprofit that's been established by Commissioner London, who sits on the EQC, is the vice-chair of the EQC this year, called the Beyond Gas Initiative. So Commissioner London's nonprofit is fully fundraising staffing this effort, so this would be gratis to the city, but it would help us advance this goal. The idea would be to take the city goal and then report metrics on it, develop a website where this could be viewable for council members or residents, so that for every year, there would be the total EVs that have been purchased in the city as a percentage, as a percentage of all new vehicles. So that would be reported as well as gasoline sales, and the goal is to see those, you know, decrease over time. So the staff required here, staff resources required would be to simply post some written statements, updates, that would be created by, by Commissioner London's Beyond Gas Initiative. They would have staff that would create social media posts and other content according to city guidelines for communications. And we've already actually done this once on a, announcing some rebates, some EV rebates by Peninsula Clean Energy. So we've done this, it seemed to work well. So we would appreciate getting council sort of formal approval to continue working in this way. Again, minimal staff resources required, but moving this action forward. Next slide. So for action number 4, the EQC is actually not the sort of expert commission on this issue. For vehicle miles traveled, the expert commission would be the Complete Streets Commission. And so we are recommending that council approve the Complete Streets Commission to work on this, this item. And I've been in communication with Chair Levin on this, and she says that they're ready to tackle this. We would probably, EQC would probably have a liaison, so one person from the commission who would, you know, communicate, and we would probably get some presentations from the Complete Streets Commission to stay coordinated. And one of the tasks would be to look at the TMP and prioritize those actions within the TMP. the TMP that are focused on VMT reduction. And for this one, no staff time, according to Chair Levin, no staff time would be required. Next slide. For action number six, which is to develop an adaptation plan, the EQC, sort of a little bit of a different proposal. Initially, we considered having someone from EQC attend the county agency board that is gathering roughly every two weeks, although sometimes once a month, to discuss sea level rise and resiliency. So that's the San Mateo County Sea Level Rise and Resiliency District Board, a mouthful. Instead, we decided that we would recommend to council that you request that staff make sure that they're attending those meetings regularly. And then, because it's such an important issue, actually, we thought it would be useful for a member of the city council to attend those meetings. So as you probably know, there are seven local elected officials who serve on that board, and five of them are city council members. Menlo Park is not one of them, but could be, I think, in the future. And I think having someone at the city council level who is attending those meetings could position us well to actually be on that board. And because of Menlo Park's exposure and risk to sea level rise, it just seems prudent to have someone at the city council level attending and able to keep colleagues informed. And I did notice, Mayor Taylor, that you were in attendance at the last one, so maybe you've been attending all along. That was my first, my first one was a week ago, so. For that one, if a staff person is attending those regularly and then reporting to council, we estimated roughly two to three hours a month to attend the meetings and present. So those are our three recommendations. I'm available to answer any questions, and that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Josie. So that brings us to the end of the combination of the update plus the recommendation on actions two, four, and six from the cap. So again, we're happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Thank you for your presentation. And are there any follow-up questions from the council before we take public comment? Okay, Ms. Heron, at this time, can you go to public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item G2, which is the Environmental Quality Commission Quarterly Report and Recommendations for the Implementation of Climate Action Plan Strategies, two, four, and six, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of the screen. I'll have the opportunity to open the screen and address the city council. So our first public commenter, Bill Chang. Bill, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Bill Chang, your friendly neighborhood PG&E rep. I'm actually here on another item, but I heard the EQC's report, and duty requires me to make just a quick comment on the trees. As you replant trees, you know, our first suggestion and our first recommendation is to make sure you know what you're digging up, you know, under your feet, what's going to be in that hole when you dig up that, dig up that yard or that space to replant a tree. But our very close second recommendation is also to look up, to see what's above you. We have a phrase here at PG&E called "right tree, right place." And so we all, we all support the urban canopy, but there's, you know, there's that love and not-so-love relationship between trees and utility lines. So we ask that, as you do that, we absolutely support it, but please look, you know, know what's underneath you and look above you as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for any public comment on item G2 regarding the EQC work plan update as well as cap items. Seeing no further. Margaret Bruce, are able to unmute yourself if you'd like to address the city council at this time?
Great, thank you so much. I'm also here to speak on a subsequent item, but I thought I'd chime in along with my colleague from PG&E. I'm the new executive director at the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. And along with the Sea Level Rise Agency in San Mateo County, the JPA has an important role to play in sea level rise protection. And I hope the members of the commission will consider participating either formally or informally at the JPA's meetings as well. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for the public comment from our two speakers. And again, I thank our commissioners for their presentation, and everything is timely, I believe, because one of your action plans is actually, I believe, is related to an item on our agenda later. And so something that has been extremely on my mind, more so because of COVID, is the comprehensive plan specifically looking at the residential areas in District One, both the Bellhaven Neighborhood and Haven Street. And so I'm curious, I don't remember what your action plan looked like in July, because I don't have that one in front of me. You didn't change anything? Is this the same exact one that you presented to us back in July, or has there been some changes?
I don't believe that there have been changes, Josie. I don't know if you wanted to answer.
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood the question. Are you, Mayor Taylor, are you speaking about the Climate Action Plan or the Commission Work Plan?
The Climate Action Plan. Specifically, I'm referring to number six.
Number six has not changed. And I think everything that was approved by the council in July is, remains unchanged. It's exactly as it was when you approved it in July.
Okay, for some reason, I thought there was an element of community engagement.
It's, there is a community engagement aspect to the, to the cap in general, and I believe that the staff is working to hire a community engagement officer who would take on this portion of the work because it's such a comprehensive issue for the city. That's my understanding. Some of the unstaffed could obviously step in to correct me, but that's, that's my understanding of the community engagement aspect.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so with respect to the pesticide issue, so I think the city is looking at the pesticide ban in the parks and public lands already. The issue that, being specific, my memory of what we asked the EQC to look at was a neighbor notification issue where neighbors, if your neighbor was going to use a certain class of pesticide, that they'd actually have to notify your neighbors of that. And that's something that's, there are examples of that in the Northeast where they have passed those ordinances, and so that I've seen. And so looking at that in terms, because I'm not sure the city has jurisdiction over whether or not a person can use a pesticide in their house, but whether or not someone can, is required to notify their neighbor that's going to use it, that they're going to use a certain class of pesticides, a different issue. And that's something that different, or jurisdictions have looked at, especially, and that relates to residential homes, not commercial, and so, or agriculture. So what I'd say, I'm still interested in looking at that notification because kids interact so closely with each other in residential neighborhoods, and they just run around in each other's yards. So I think that's, I'd still be interested in the EQC looking at that neighborhood, that neighbor notification and the examples of that, and then to come back to us with the recommendation of what they think is viable there. And I'm not sure what the outcome there is, but I know that there's great interest of that from residents in the city. And given that the city has taken the steps of taking pesticides out of our parks and our public areas, I think a neighbor notification follows along that same logic. Where I weigh in on the rest of it is, it doesn't look like there's a tremendous amount of staff time involved with what the EQC is looking at. And I don't, I personally, I think it's, you know, I love the fact that our EQC is empowered to give us great work product, so I wouldn't want to constrain them. And I think, I don't want to volunteer my colleague for the sea level rise, but I think we probably have colleagues who are very interested in doing that and getting on that commission, and I would be very supportive of that. So, and if my colleagues, if none of my colleagues are interested in that, that's something that I'd be interested in signing up for, but I don't want to take that away from a colleague either. So, and I will conclude there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
Remember to unmute myself this time. I went to a lot of the first meetings that Dave Pine had on the sea level rise, and they're really very, very interesting. So I would recommend that anybody on council who's interested in that, keep an eye on it, because it's a very complex and really interesting issue that is going to be impacting us. With regard to the pesticides, it's very difficult to say pesticide. That's like saying chemicals. We banned specific glucosamine roundup in the parks because it's been proven to not be safe. There was also a state bill that just passed providing further restrictions on certain types of rodenticides, because the rats were eating the poison and then getting eaten by the eagles. Eagles would get sick and fall, and then the mountain lions would eat them, and it was getting, it was causing a lot of problems. They were, they were dealing with that. But I'm happy to sit down with you. I'm a pesticide geek, and I think the idea of requiring neighbors to let others know when they're using something that might be harmful to them, I totally support that. And that brings us to gas-powered leaf blowers, everyone's favorite, non, not favorite subject. I have to admit, for years, people have been talking about this, and I thought, ah, they make some noise, you know, I wish they'd use solar ones, whatever. But it's been brought to my attention that it actually really exacerbates people's allergies and is really making people ill. And even in COVID, with COVID, it's, it's not safe, and I believe that people's rights end at the beginning of someone else's nose. And so I think it might be a time, maybe not immediately, but in the future, to look at that, because I've been educated on the subject and learned that the leaf-powered blowers can actually really harm people's, certain people's health. And I would love it if you guys would love to get involved in volunteers and keeping them busy, because I constantly have Girl Scout groups and Boy Scout groups and different people who honestly could do some real good in this city, and we haven't really kept, I know Starla, our city manager, has a list of a few things, but it would be wonderful if we had an ongoing list so that people could turn up and we could say, hey, go clean this park. Hey, we need this rebuilt. Hey, you can redo this, this other project to make the parks a better place. And it's great for the kids involved, teaches them responsibility, gives them their awards, and really helps the community too. So if you want to get involved in that, I think that's fantastic. In terms of the cap with Janelle London's group, Beyond Gas Initiative, I think that's fantastic. Again, it's another one of my pet things is getting in enough chargers and how we encourage people to get into hybrid and electric cars. I don't know if she founded that and she works there. If she does, that's a little bit more of a problem, but I'm sure you can work that out with her city attorney. But I love you guys getting involved in helping make easier choices for people to use non-gas-powered cars, and Complete Streets with VMT makes perfect sense. I think you guys are on the, on the, on the right track, and I'm so excited by all the great work that you're doing. When you're talking about the level for recommendations, it's tricky because it's a slippery slope, but I don't, I think that you, your commission is doing a fantastic job, and I'm really excited by what you're talking about. And I just want to congratulate you, and please give our best wishes to the other people on the commission, that you're always just so positive and you have so much energy, and we really appreciate the great work that you do. Thanks.
Thank you. Josie, you had your hand up earlier, so I just want to give you some.
I just wanted to clarify your question about number six and public engagement. There was never anything in that section about public engagement, and I think with council deciding to defer it, there was, you know, that right now, there isn't, actually, I understand that there's potentially an opportunity, a grant for, to address sea level rise, and that's on the council's agenda. So maybe there is actually some staff work being done on this one, but the decision in July was to defer this one. So with the deferring of it, I think the, with it, that was any sort of plan. A plan would, of course, include public engagement. So if, you know, if that's something that the council decides you're going to sort of pull forward and have staff be working on, then I do, I would strongly encourage robust public engagement on number six. I just wanted to clarify that because it was deferred by the council, that there was no plan and therefore no public engagement specifically planned, because there was no plan.
Thank you for clarifying. Ms. Lucky?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor and council members. Thank you, Commissioner Price and Geller. I just want to also chime in and add, so, and to kind of help the compromise between the EQC and the city council for the pesticide use, which is really to have council action so that the EQC can add it to their work plan. So if the council be kind enough to make a motion and vote, if that's what the entire council would like the EQC to work on, they can then add it to their work plan. And then just to talk a little bit too about the deferred cap action item, so they were deferred, and I just want to also clarify that they, is because we were working on other projects that were related to those cap action items. So for number six, it was looking at the Sea Level Rise District and their plans unfolding in that realm. And so the EQC is proposing to kind of get more involved in that process itself and with the Sea Level Rise District. So just to clarify, and with VMT, there, we had the TMP, we have a few other projects that reduce vehicle miles traveled. So they were deferred because we were already working on a lot of projects as well this fiscal year in that regard. So just to clarify there too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky. I appreciate it. And Ms. Robinson?
Well, just, I know that the council's interested in adding these items, or at least superficially, it sounds that way. So this is, and I'll lean on the interim city attorney on this, but this is scheduled as a report, not as an action item on tonight's agenda, but we can definitely bring it back at an upcoming meeting for council consideration and look at the staffing issues as well. I really appreciate that the EQC is taking all this on. It's quite amazing. So.
Thank you. Councilmember, oh, Ms. Silver, did you have a follow-up to Ms. Robinson's comment?
Yeah, I would just recommend to the council that if you did want to take some action on this, it is an agendized for that, but we can certainly bring it back.
No problem.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
It's agendized the same as the Housing Commission meeting, is it not? The Housing Commission report?
Well, the Housing Commission had a staff report, and this was a presentation.
Okay, we can't vote on something that doesn't have a staff report?
Well, I think it's more difficult to understand what you're voting on.
Well, we're not talking about clarity or any clarity. We just voted on the Housing Commission, and it's in the same presentation area of the agenda as this. Why could we vote on one and not the other?
Well, so my understanding is that the council was taking the action of adopting their proposed plan. This is a broader reach than that, but the interim city attorney clarified.
Yeah. So yes, the work plan for the Housing Commission needs to be approved. And so that was the agenda item for the Housing Commission. This item, as I understand it, was an update on the EQC's proposal to implement Climate Action Plan Strategies 2, 4, and 6. So if the council wants to provide direction to the EQC to do that, then, and they may want to also provide direction to amend the work plan as well with respect to some of the other issues that you all have discussed, then it would be appropriate to take that direction this evening, and then we can bring it back as a consent item for the council at a subsequent meeting.
So I'm looking at the agenda right now. Consumer Reports, Work Plan, and the other is Quality Report and Recommendations for Implementing Climate Action Plan. It's agendized that we're reviewing recommendations for implementation. Why would we not be able to vote on that? I'm just saying, everything, we, you can't say that everything has to have a staff report because we've just gone through weeks of voting on things that don't have a staff report.
So let me just jump in on my, Councilmember Carlton. So in asking for an action, I think the step is that the EQC needs to include it in their work plan and bring it back to the City Council so it's in their work plan and look at the work plan in its entirety to ensure that it, that they're still able to accomplish all the other tasks related to Climate Action Plan and provide that recommendation to you through their work plan.
That I understand. So if we can give direction to the commission that we think those are great ideas, we'd love it if you'd like to work on it, and then they could put that in their work plan and bring it back for our approval. Is that the way?
Yes. I apologize, yes, for making it sound like it's a decision.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were voting on and what we weren't voting on. Thank you. And also, I think it's really important as well to get the feedback from the people on the commission if it's something that they're passionate about looking into or need more direction as well. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Just to push the issue a little bit more, I want to take note that the items on 2, 4, and 6 that are being pushed forward right now or proposed are actually exactly what was in the plan that we were, that we approved back in July. And in fact, those three items were stated that they would be, there would be a regional agency working on the EV goals, that the Transportation Complete Streets Commission would be working on number four, and that it actually would be, worked with the county of the new JPA, One Shoreline. So these are actually right in line with what has been done, what was approved by the council back in July. Although I understand that staff would like to have it come back, but I fully would support what has been proposed. One other comment to that is actually, on the gas-powered leaf blowers, there has been some work by residents, one of whom it will now be Leah Elkins, who will now be on the, or is now on the Environmental Quality Commission, and also Lisa Williams, who have been proposed a gas-powered leaf blower flyer, which then went to Clay Curtain and got slightly revised and is now actually up on the city website under Healthy Air and the Sustainability Group, Healthy Air. And there's actually now a printout, a handout that could be shared with gardeners and neighbors in both English and Spanish. If you go to the city website, Sustainability, Healthy Air, you can download and print a handout too about the gas-powered leaf blower regulations. And they've done a nice job. It is a start toward regulating gas-powered leaf blowers. One other question I had was for city manager Jerome Robinson, and that was if we could just get confirmation that in fact we are no longer using pesticides on city property? Please.
Yes, ma'am, we are not using pesticides on city property. Or, you know, I need to check that. But my understanding is we are not using them at this time under the direction of the City Council.
That's my understanding too. Thank you so much.
On that specific type and class, right? So, and I appreciate Councilmember Carlton correcting that. Thank you for, I was, when I said it, I was overbroad. There's a type of, there's a class that we did. So you were very polite in correcting me, and I appreciate that, and I acknowledge it. I spoke overbroad.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I just, so I think it's great that Environmental Quality Commission is pushing to do more, and I think that's wonderful, and we want them to do that. Also acknowledge the fact that it's evident that our professional staff wants to have that come back and to come, what was shared tonight, come back to us in a professional staff report with their recommendation. Think that's fair. So I'm fine with it coming back to us. I think that this council is always, is expressing enthusiasm and sharing that with Environmental Quality Commission, but I also want to be supportive of staff and giving them the opportunity to let us know what that means with them knowing full well where our enthusiasm lies. So that's where I am on it. But as always, incredibly impressed. And I hope that there's, I hope the neighbor notification on the pesticide issue is clarified. So, but, so I wanted to just share where I was, and I'll be quiet again.
Thank you. Just to follow up on a couple of things that I believe it was Commissioner Geller brought up. I believe you did, I'm not sure. Regarding the community engagement piece, I'm definitely in support of your recommendations. And then specifically to Action 6 about having a community engagement, a robust community engagement piece attached to that as well as a part of the action of number 6. And then the other piece that I just wanted to bring up, I had no idea you were at the meeting last week. And so, and I'm glad that you're attending them. I think it's very important. I'm definitely in support of having a seat for Menlo Park, and I'm definitely interested in sitting in that seat. And until that happens, I'll just continue to attend the meetings and stay in contact with their executive director and make public comment because I think that this is something that has to be continuously talked about until we actually start taking action. So I appreciate and support everything you're doing, especially around the gas leaf blowers. I had no idea. Thank you, Councilmember Nash, for sharing that information that is on our website. And so we can print out copies and share them with our neighbors that don't know that this exists. So I appreciate that. And then also, just to follow up as far as the recommendations, you put in your, in your recommendations about how much staff time would be needed versus how much staff time wouldn't be needed. And I think on that part, I agree with Councilmember Mueller is letting our professional staff look at what their time is and how to put that in your work plan, I think, has to be addressed. As our Housing Commission just reported, they had their work plan attached to our, to our agenda. So it was easy to see what they're working on and what they hope to work on. I know that you brought yours to us already, and this may be redundant. So I'm willing to support it if that is an action we can take this evening. Not sure about that based on what our city attorney said. Not sure about that. But just want you to know that, you know, I support what you're working on. I support you adding it to your, continuing to work on it since it's already in your work plan. But I understand why you brought it back because, you know, there's new information since you created the work plan and the urgency of now as far as when it comes to sea level rise and flooding. And so the sooner the better. And I see both Ms. Lucky and Ms. Silver came on screen, so I'm not sure who was first. I'll go with Ms. Silver.
Thank you. So Councilmember Nash reminded me that the Climate Action Plan has already, obviously, the council's already acted on that. And there is a framework there for 2, 4, and 6 to be implemented through more of a collaborative regional perspective. So if, if we interpret this request from the EQC as wanting to participate in that existing, you know, approved initiative, then it may not have any budgetary impacts that need to be acted on by the council. And maybe it wouldn't require further analysis by staff, but I'll defer to Ms. Lucky on that. And to that extent, if you just want to empower the EQC to take a little bit more, you know, affirmative proactive role in Strategies 2, 4, and 6, I think that that is properly agendized for this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Lucky?
Yeah, I would echo what Ms. Silver has stated and to Councilmember Nash's point that the recommendations for 2, 4, and 6 from the EQC do align with what is already adopted from City Council in July. They utilize the resources of the Complete the Streets Commission for VMT to look at a overall goal. And then for number two, gasoline sales reductions. I mean, that is essentially what we're looking is for another entity, whether a nonprofit or an organization like Peninsula Clean Energy could help to market and track and monitor on behalf of the city our own data and have that be available for us to use as well as looking at what other communities are doing. And then with number six as well too, is looking at how the sea level rise district unfolds, what they're working on and keeping a close ear to what is happening and how that impacts Menlo Park.
Thank you. Are there any other follow-up questions or comments? Vice Mayor Combs?
You know, I guess my one question would be specifically as it relates to this sort of Beyond Gas initiative. Like, what's to stop that entity from doing what is proposed here with no city involvement? I mean, what, is there an actual need for city engagement on what they're attempting to, you know, to collect and to surface? It seems like the information that would be, I don't, the extent to which is the city the main sort of information source for this data? If it's not, then obviously why do they need the city? And if it is the city, it would be public information which they or anyone else could access anyway. And so I think that's sort of what's not clear to me. And I do see in these other, these later bullets, this sort of engagement of the city posting some of their information. But I don't know if this is a proposal where it would just be a scenario where we say they should just go and do, and be free of any sort of specific city engagement. I mean, I know somewhat similarly, we, you know, recently converted the, or not sort of converted, but sort of started a process by which the Sister City Committee would no longer be a actual city commission or, you know, formal city commission and would just be run by a nonprofit. And so I don't know if like, in a similar scenario, like there is a need in this situation for city engagement. That would be my only sort of question.
Commissioner Geller?
Yeah, I'll attempt to answer that. I think it's more that we need them more than they necessarily need us. I think they will go forward, and I believe that they are taking sort of a regional approach. So initially, it was going to, the focus was going to be Menlo Park, and then it sort of broadened out from that. So Menlo Park will be one of many cities that they're reporting on metrics, providing content for residents, access to rebates, et cetera. I think the linkage comes in the city being willing to take the content that they develop. So little updates on rebates that might be available or tips on how to convert to an EV that the city is desiring in order to try to complete this action. Number two is desiring to take that content that's being provided to it for free and promote it among residents so that the city can try to reach that goal.
Vice Mayor Combs?
I'll just add, that is something I would like the staff to specifically weigh in on. It would be nice to sort of have a staff report or at least something sort of bulleted out very clearly from the staff's perspective, like what that relationship is to be. And so then, you know, we can clearly see, like, if it is going to be, you know, posting or linking to their website, is it, you know, going to be something else? It would just be, you know, I think sort of for me, helpful if it was quite clear what that relationship is. And, and yeah, and again, I don't have any issues with it, but just that this, you know, I can see scenarios where we say that, like, you know, something is going to take an hour of staff's time, ends up taking a lot more. And so just again, like, and so I would just want to make sure that we know, again, what are the guardrails? If we are saying that this is something that is mostly going to be run by this nonprofit, that we're clear about that from the beginning.
Commissioner Geller?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point, and it is something that the EQC spent quite a bit of time exploring and discussing with staff member Lucky and staff member Curtain. And again, we did sort of like a trial run of this, but we were, we tried to be very clear about exactly what would be, you know, what would be the involvement from staff. And again, it was a once a month, taking some posts that were according to guidelines provided by the city staff and sort of tailored to those guidelines. So, but yes.
Thank you. Ms. Lucky? Thank you. I just wanted to follow up. Next steps moving forward?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. That's exactly where I was thinking as well. So I think for Chair Price and Commissioner Geller, it's going back to the EQC and putting on one of their sooner agendas, either next month or in January, to add pesticide use, pesticide use policy citywide to their EQC work plan. use, pesticide use policy citywide to their EQC work plan. And then for staff to look at the recommendations for cap actions two, four, and six and come back and kind of understand the relationship for, for some of these and, and what is the deliverable and, and the roles and responsibilities. If, and if what I've said, it kind of captures the general direction of the council that we can, can move forward with that. Through consensus.
Do we have a consensus to move forward? Based on what Ms. Lucky has, has shared? See, two heads nodding. Thumbs up. So Ms. Heron, do we need to take a vote?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I would actually like to just confirm with our interim city attorney that no vote is needed in the direction provided by Sustainability Manager. It's all required.
Yes, it's up to the council whether they want to take a vote to give further direction or whether this general consensus direction is sufficient.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. So Mayor Taylor, to answer your question in a most roundabout way, what we have is fine and no motion is required.
Okay. Vice Mayor Combs?
So my question, it begs the question like, what, will this be coming back to us in some form? And if so, what will that form look like? So that will help inform whether I think that I will, it's something I want to take a vote on or not.
This would return to the city council after it goes back to the EQC. So as Rebecca mentioned, it'll go to EQC either December or January, and then following that meeting, we'll add it to a city council from said item.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I guess my concern about this is the timing and the fact that there is an urgency to these items. And if it then goes back and doesn't come back to council till, let's say, January, is that something that the commission feels that that will stifle progress?
I think.
So just.
Oh. Did you have a question for me? Sorry.
Yes, it is a question, but I just wanted to chime in that. So for the community-wide pesticide use, that would be brought back to the EQC to bring back through their work plan. For cap action items two, four, and six, there's enough consent, if there's enough consensus, we can move forward to, for staff to return back to council earlier than, than the, than the work plan for the pesticide use addition for, for final approval. Does that make sense?
If, if it was already on the list, sorry, Councilmember Nash, if it was already on the list, what would we be approving? If we already approved the cap?
So for two, four, and six, yeah, so the, so Councilmember Combs gave an example. So if we're going to go with a beyond gas initiative to potentially have them essentially implement cap action number two, you know, what do those roles and responsibilities look like? And we would want to seek city council approval of using the city's website and connecting that with the nonprofit or sending out releases. So that's just one example. And so we could go through each of those to really hone in on, you know, again, where are those boundaries? Where are the rails, as Councilmember Combs said, on, on these topics?
Okay, that, that makes sense what Vice Mayor Combs said. Okay, that makes sense with, with Vice Mayor Combs said for, I think it's number action two. So I'm speaking more about four and six. If those, if nothing's changed, well, I did ask for a robust community engagement, but that was already a part of the cap. Would that still need to come back to us? Or is it just action two?
I. So for number four, it would be directing the Complete the Streets Commission to work on a goal and then prioritizing the TMP for VMT reductions. I think I'd probably need a little bit of understanding too of, of how, and directing the Complete the Streets Commission to actually work on this specific item if it's not included in their work plan already. And so it would probably need some council approval in that regard if it's not already on their work plan. And another staff can chime in who works with the Complete the Streets Commission on that note. And then for number six, it would be just again, it sounded like there was quarterly reports that would be asked of staff, you know, again, just confirming with the council that that is what they're seeking for that, that cap action item.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lucky. Councilmember Mueller and then Councilmember Nash.
This just isn't fully baked enough, honestly. For transparency's sake, there's just too much hypothetical, trying to figure out what page we're on, what is it? What's it look like? It's just not fully baked enough tonight. So I understand there's urgency and I share that urgency to work on items like this. But this is, it's just, what I suggest we do is that on the items that staff can bring back in December, they bring them back in December, then with clarity around them, and then the items that need to wait for clarity in January, they'd be brought back into January. But the calisthenics of what we're doing right now just isn't. I just, I've sort of reached the threshold level where I'm, I'm just understanding there's a lot of, it's, it's difficult. We're putting professional staff in a difficult position. We're putting ourselves in a different, difficult position with the EQC. And that's just, we need to get clarity around what it is, get it to a staff report, and then get it approved. So that's, that's where I am. I, you know, I have enthusiasm for what was, what was brought up. I think we have consensus that we want those items, we want framing around those items we put in the work plan and brought back for approval and to do that as expeditiously as possible. So, but, but I think trying to move forward with anything more than that tonight is, there's just a level of vagary around it that it's pretty clear professional staff is a little uncomfortable with and that, and that members of the council uncomfortable with. I think we have consensus that we want to move forward and look at all of it as fast as possible.
I agree with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
So I just wanted to mention it that regarding number four around the VMT, we just approved the TMP, Transportation Master Plan, which actually called out that item. So, thank you.
Okay, well, the council has given general direction. Councilmember Carlton, you had a follow-up?
I was just going to say, just to wrap all this up, because this, we've gone on so much longer than we usually do in these things. I, I just wanted to let you know, we really do appreciate your hard work and your passion for taking on this extra work, and we feel appreciated because you are. And please give our, our thanks to the other people in the commission.
Thank you.
Yes.
We absolutely will.
Thank you very much for all your work. Councilmember Nash?
I just wanted to also acknowledge all the hard work that staff and especially Ms. Lucky has done in conjunction with the Climate Action Plan, which has really been pushing full steam ahead and then some. And Ms. Lucky's been right there with the commission. So thank you, everybody.
Right. Thank you again for the presentation, and the council will be taking a dinner break. It is 7:45. We will return at 8:10. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And as a reminder, please disengage all webcams and microphone and only engage your webcams when you return. Thank you.
Howdy.
How are you guys?
Doing well.
Good. We actually might be done like, we might be done before like 9:30 maybe.
Just remember to all the City Council members who are still live in our meeting.
Oh, apologies. Hi, everyone.
Just pending the return of one. Welcome back everyone to our virtual day.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And the next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. Under the Consent Calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a City Council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. And Ms. Heron, can you take public comment on items H1 through H4?
Yes, so at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the consent calendar items, H1 through H4, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up the microphone. So this will be the final call for any public comment on items H1 through H4. First speaker will be. Put down, but let me just confirm, Peter Edmonds, did you have a comment on any item on the consent calendar? Don't see the hand being re-raised or the microphone. Seeing no hands, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And on the consent calendar, there are two items that I've been, well, one item that I've been asked to pull in, one item I'm pulling. That first item is H1.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And I did have Mr. Edmonds' hand re-raised, so it was like giving the opportunity to provide public comment on an item on the consent calendar. He would like to, so Peter, if you would like to unmute yourself, you may address the City Council at this time. You can locate the microphone in the top right hand side of your screen.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
So, good evening, Mayor Taylor and City Councilors. I am Peter Edmonds, resident of District 3. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. To be blunt for a change, I'm unhappy with the brevity of the minute for my public comment on October 27th. Given that it was of sufficient interest to Mayor Taylor that she asked a question about it, and that the third public speaker, Julie Rockio, spoke only in support of my comment, I think my comment should be more fully recorded. So I now offer a long and a short version. So I now offer a long and a short version. Adding to the existing minute which reads, Peter Edmund spoke in opposition to the heritage tree removal. My short version continues as. Andrew councilmember's attention to two slightly different alternative plans which he had offered to the planning commission on July 22nd, 2019. And October 5th, 2020. And which the planning commission had ignored in contravention of the recently revised heritage tree ordinance period. Or. Replacing the period by a comma. My long version, still referring to my alternative plans. Would continue further as. And which comprised merely relocating the mixed-use building or just its main entrance and patio 16 inches westward along Cambridge Avenue. And making minor modifications as defined. In order to avoid overlap of the footprint of the building and the root protection zone of heritage tree number one. And thus allow its preservation. I'd be happy to provide these versions to the city council and city clerk in writing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That does include our comment on this item. And Mayor Taylor, as you had stated, I had requested that. The minutes for October 27th be pulled, although attached to the handouts here, I have listed or have added. The minutes with edits, they have further been edited and I wanted to provide those to the city council for their consideration. And so when we go to approving the consent calendar, just knowing that these are the corrections for the minute that we have for the October 27th meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Councilmember Mueller.
Wrong, but, wrong, but. I just want to speak to Mr. Edmund's comment. And we very much care, care about his comments and appreciate that he comes to council members to share, to council meetings to share them. I would make the humble suggestion that when commenting on the minutes, that it's important to be careful in terms of language chosen, if you want it to actually adopted, because the word ignored in characterization of the planning commission decision is, is basically a word that could be viewed as loaded judgment or judgmental or, or, or us characterizing another body's decision. If we were to ask the planning commissioner what they did that evening, they may very well say, we considered that information provided, but decided to go a different direction as opposed to that they ignored it. And so when trying to craft language for us to look in the minutes, that's alternative. You want to make sure, the term that we used when I practiced law was that it's not argumentative. You don't want to create an argumentative statement, or rather you want to create a statement that just correct, captures what happened without argument either way, but just that it occurred. And so, but I appreciate very much, and we are actually. The council in the past has, has really tried to refrain from very long minutes. And sometimes that actually kept, that actually works against council members as well. We tend to be long and verbose as I'm being now, and, and the minutes. Might just say something very, very short and succinct about what I said. So it's really sort of a signpost, or if someone's interested to go back and, and look and see what that was. But I, I, I share that to you in, in good heart and, and not being judgmental of what, of what you had to share with us this evening, but rather to just provide a helpful hint for next time. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Mueller. And Ms. Heron, I just had a follow-up question just about the, the minutes, and I believe this has come up before, that you put in the minutes, action minutes only, or something you would define in that term, if you could clarify that for me, maybe I'm describing it incorrectly.
No, that is correct. According to our city council policy, it's how we do prepare action minutes. We try to keep our public comment responses to less, at least one sentence, no more. And then when we capture the city council discussion, we tend to just lean on what was overall discussion, overall clarification, direction if that happens, and then succinct enough emotion that we can. So again, just following kind of the guides and rules of action minutes, as councilmember Mueller had mentioned, we do try to keep more succinct, shorter version.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And the last screen that was up, I guess, was the changes, the edits to the minutes on H1.
Correct. It was the change to the October 27th minute for item G4. And again, it was related to the city council discussion. I had received some input from some council members. Again, just making it more clear.
Okay, thank you. And everyone had a, an opportunity to read it, the edits.
You need a motion, Mayor Taylor?
Yes, and I'm, I'm pulling item H3.
Okay.
So do we want to do them?
Everything but H3 then? As amended?
And that, that is very. We have a motion by city councilmember Carlton and a second by city councilmember Nash. Is that correct? Thank you. So the motion by city councilmember Carlton and a second by city councilmember Nash to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of item H3.
As amended.
H1 as. So is there any further city council discussion or question? Seeing none, I will call votes and press.
Aye.
Yes.
City councilmember Nash.
Yes.
By Smith Holmes.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Heron. And for item H3, and I know that we actually have two members of the public. One from PG&E and also one from San Francisco Creek JPA. I pulled this item because I would like to have some language added, because it, it reads as the project is protecting only the, the property around PG&E substation, and then also the property that Facebook owns. And this came up earlier, my concern is just how it reads is the community as well needs to be included. And so I spoke with the city manager earlier today, she suggested pulling it and just talking a little bit about some language that I would like to have added. And asking for support from the council so that we can move forward with applying for the grant, but with changes, a few changes or additions to the letter. And just for transparency, councilmember Nash was on that call with me as well, with the city manager. And Ms. Darla Jerome Robinson, I'm not sure if you are available, if there was something else that I needed to add as well.
No, I think you captured it perfectly. I, I think the request before the city council is to support the mayor in modifying the language in the letter to reflect the importance of the community and the impact, the significant impact these modifications could make to the neighborhood. And, and if I could just add, I think that's a great idea. I think it will bolster our grant application process.
Councilmember Nash?
Um, I actually was going to take us on a slightly different tangent, if that's. All right, I do agree with exactly what's been stated as far as the letter. I was wondering, I believe from discussions yesterday with. With Mr. Murphy, that there may be some, a, a short overview of what this project entails, which I would appreciate. If it's not available, then I will do it offline at a later point. Or Mr. Lamb, hello?
Good evening, councilmembers. Chris Lamb, Assistant Public Works Director. Yes, I did put together a, a quick few slides here to, to go over the, the project in general. And hopefully you'll be able to start seeing my screen here soon. Are you, are you able to see my screen? Yes, okay. So I'll, I'll give it, I'll give a brief, brief update on the, on the FEMA grant. So the FEMA grant is the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant. It's referred to as Brick Grant. I also want to mention that, that we do have Margaret Bruce, the executive director from the San Francisco Creek JPA on the line this evening. So I think she, she'd like to give a few remarks. And then we also have Bill Ching, who's the Senior Government Relations, Relations Officer on the line as well, if there, if there's any questions about PG&E's involvement. So like you mentioned, there, there's just a couple of actions on, on the, on the, the staff report for this evening. And then really what we're looking for is the, the authorization for the mayor to sign a project letter of support. I think staff feels that this. This recommendation is, is, is broad enough that, that we can make some edits to the, to the draft letter that was, that was included in, in the staff report. And we can work with the mayor on, on making those. So the, the project itself is a collaboration between Menlo Park, PG&E, the, the Creek JPA, and, and most recently Facebook. And that's, that's really, I, I think the, where the, the update on the project is, is most beneficial for, for this evening. The, 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 the project that was, that was defined, when, when PG&E came, came to the city. Back in September was to, to partner with, with, between the PG&E and the city to essentially build one of, one of the sections out of the, the Safer Bay feasibility report. To, to provide protection to the, the PG&E substation out located on, on Bayfront Expressway. So the way that the Safer Bay feasibility report is, is built is it identified nine different reaches between Marsh Road and, and the San Francisco Creek. Nine, nine reaches that we need to be constructed to provide 100-year protection to, to the communities of, of Menlo Park and East Palo Alto. So when we were looking at just, just the PG&E project, we were really looking at just reach five, five and six have been effectively combined into, into a reach, reach five. With, with now the, the inclusion of Facebook into the project, it allows us to leverage, leverage this project into a much, much larger project. So Facebook has provided a commitment to, to fund the improvements that would surround their, their, their classic campus. So that, that is effectively reach four. But by including that money in, in the grant application, we're able to leverage additional $20 million potentially of, of FEMA grant funds. And that extra $20 million would, would allow us to complete reaches two and three in addition. And I'll, I'll show a, a map on, on the next, next slide here, but it, it allows us to make some really, really significant headway on, on the resiliency in, in Menlo Park. You know, it, it would provide that resiliency to, to, as, as the mayor mentioned, not only the, the PG&E substation, not only the, the Facebook classic campus, but also the residential neighborhoods, businesses, and other critical infrastructure in the city. The estimated project is looking like it would be about a $66 million project. 10 million of that would come from, from PG&E. Little under 8 million would come in a commitment from Facebook, and then up to $50 million of, of brick grant. So here, here's the map I was, as you're referring to earlier, this is also in the staff report. This, this shows the, the nine different reaches that were identified in, in the Safer Bay Plan, Reach 1 along Marsh Road, and then 2 and 3 between Bedwell Bayfront Park and the classic campus, Reach 4 around the classic campus, and then 5 up along Bayfront Expressway around the PG&E substation, and then back, back down the other side. Reach 7, 8, and 9 are actually in East Palo Alto, and East Palo Alto is, is also underway on a project to complete reaches 8, 9, and a portion of Reach 7. So between, between this project that, that we've identified and, and the East Palo Alto projects. Probably about like 80 to 90% of the, of the, of the shoreline would be protected from, from future sea level rise. So that, that's, that's pretty much all I have. I, I think, like I said, Margaret Bruce from the, from the GPA wanted to make a few remarks. So I don't know, Judy, if you want to promote Margaret?
Great. I think I'm unmuted, and I don't have slides to share, but I can speak to additional points. I had, let's see, I, my, my, my computer is doing strange things, so please ignore the bonging in the background. So I wanted to thank Chris for the introduction and point out a couple of things. In those nine reaches, this particular grant opportunity lets us take a very, very big bite out of the apple. It doesn't mean that all of it will be completed at this time, but it does position the, the whole project to go forward very positively with other grant opportunities, both at the federal level and at the state, and also regional level. The remaining reaches that won't be covered by this particular grant opportunity are probably perfect candidates either for future brick grants or for regional measure double A grants. And we're going to be well positioned and looking for grant opportunities so that we can close the remaining gaps in the Safer Bay reaches. An important consideration is also how important Caltrans and MTC are to the final completion of this, as 84 is a, is, is an important component of this as well. And we'll be working closely with our grant compatriots, the city of Menlo Park and others, to ensure that Caltrans and MTC are encouraged to further that progress. With regard to the Safer Bay project in both East Palo Alto and Menlo Park, the JPA has already an existing outreach endeavor through our DWR grants. And we've engaged with the climate resilient communities and Casa Nu, Casa Nuextra organizations, or Nuextra Casa organizations for regular outreach in the course of their community engagement. So we are doing our best to get the word out to residents and businesses about the value and importance of the Safer Bay project. Another important component of this is, as we create these shoreline levees, it also provides a critical opportunity for us to restore ponds R1 and R2, that large sort of Minnesota-shaped area in, in Chris Lamb's slide there. By restoring those ponds to salt marsh habitat, it provides a buffer, a sponge for the shoreline along Menlo Park. So we'll be able to provide recreation, habitat conservation, and flood safety for the, the communities of Menlo Park and East Palo Alto. I'm hoping that if anyone has any questions, I can answer them, and. We are eager for your support on this project.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions from council or for Mr. Lamb or for Ms. Bruce? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I guess my first question is, what sea level rise are we building for? Thank you. I guess my first question is, what sea level rise are we building for? And I know there's the flooding of the creek, the flooding from the bay and the king tide, and then also sea level rise. And sort of what are we building for?
So the Safer Bay Plan itself looked at the 100-year storm event and an additional three feet of sea level rise. That's consistent with about a 50-year outlook from when the Safer Bay Report was completed in 2015 or 2016. So it's looking at like a 2065 estimation of sea level rise.
So I know that these estimates are being revised upwards all the time. How does this project take into account the higher levels of sea level rise?
Yeah, so I think the sea level rise estimates, there's kind of, there's two components to it. It's how far, how far out you look in terms of sea level rise and how conservative or aggressive you think, one thinks that the that the sea level rise is going to occur. The Safer Bay Plan, like I mentioned, looked at a 50-year timeframe and took a pretty conservative approach in terms of how quickly sea level rise would occur over that timeframe. I think some of the studies that you see more recently are looking at the what year, I think 2021-00. So it's, you know, now we're looking out 75 to 80 years. And so, you know, if things didn't change in terms of, you know, our impact on the climate and impact on sea level rise, then yes, then, you know, those numbers are going to be higher and look worse. So we're looking at, again, about a 50-year timeframe on unanticipated sea level rise.
So can you, actually, first of all, based on how many feet above today's high tide are you? Is it accommodating?
Yeah, I don't recall what those exact numbers are. I'm sorry, Councilmember Nash, we can definitely follow up with you on that information.
Thank you. So I'm very interested in how many feet above today's high tide it is, and also how many feet above FEMA's 100-year tide. And then also, how is it tying in, connecting and aligning with other projects on either side? And I see Mr. Chang's there.
So I think, just to answer your question, Councilmember Nash, yeah, we can definitely get a little bit more of that project detail, I think, to you. We probably need to get some of the individuals that are a bit more technical and involved in the project to put that information together for you. The, how the project relates to kind of others in the area. We included, in the staff report, a link to a GIS map that the city recently created to kind of look at the different projects that are going on that are either storm-water related or coastal flooding related. So that was kind of in response, I think, to a request from the mayor at the council meeting where we discussed the Bayfront Canal project and kind of having a better understanding of what are all the different things that we have going on in the Bayfront area as it relates to sea level rise, flooding, just general storm-water infrastructure. So that was put together to kind of, I think, look at that question in terms of, you know, how do these, how do these things all interact with one another? I think maybe Mr. Chang has some information on on the goals as it relates to the PG&E substation.
Hi, everyone. Again, Bill Chang, your PG&E rep for the Peninsula. Thank you for this opportunity, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Chris, thank you, and thank you for taking the lead on this. I, we do have information, and I say "we" because with me on this meeting is also Heather Rock, head of our Corporate Sustainability Group. Heather, can you, are you on, Heather?
Actually, Mr. Chang, I could probably chime in for some of the statistics and answer Councilmember Nash's questions about the specific sea level rise levels.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
And I think, again, I think Heather is on, we can talk about, she says something about four feet as a conservative measure.
That may be specific to Reach Four, but overall, the Safer Bay is to protect up to 10 feet above today's daily high tide. And following OPR's, the Office of Planning and Research's 2020 Guidelines, of three and a half feet for this project.
I'm sorry, could you, three and a half feet in relationship to?
Of, for sea level rise. So up to 10 feet more than today's daily high tide and three and a half feet of sea level rise over the next 50 years.
And so do you know what that would be for 100 years?
I don't.
Okay.
We can follow up with that detail.
And then when you said an average above today's high tide, presumably the lowest is the one that counts?
I'm not an insider, so. Yeah, yet, nor am I, and I don't play one on TV either. There is, we're projecting out a number of years, and the daily high tide, of course, will rise over those 50 years. We have a margin of three and a half feet of, there is 10 feet of safety now and three and a half, accounting for another three and a half feet of sea level rise. I'll probably have to tap into either Heather or go back to my staff and answer your question in more detail over a period of time, like 100 years.
Thank you. And then does this tie into the, like, the East Palo Alto? Or my understanding is there's actually a gap in the reach, between Reach Five and Reach Seven?
Yes, there will be a gap. There's also a gap at Reach One.
So does that protect even PG&E until those gaps are filled in? And I'm sorry, that's a really basic question, but.
It will not provide full protection. It is a huge step in the right direction. It is an immense step towards full protection.
But until the other gaps are filled in, does it actually protect, realizing that it's excellent to be getting more, you know, getting infrastructure in place? But is there still a, as long as there's a gap, doesn't the water come in?
The potential is there. I see Chris has his hand raised, and as he is public works person, probably can answer that more articulately than I can.
Yes, thank you. So, Councilmember Nash, as part of the Brick Application, we have to, we have to be able to showcase to FEMA that there is recognizable benefit by completing the project. And so, like Ms. Bruce mentioned, you know, it's not, it's not going to 100% fully protect. We need to complete the full plan in order to do that. But there are benefits that would be achieved by completing, you know, these segments. Like I said, this would effectively complete about 80% of the shoreline infrastructure. So beyond even just the PG&E substation, the, you know, parts of the residential and business community would receive benefit from this project. When we get into design, the actual design of the project, we will look at, you know, having a better understanding of what this project, again, if awarded the grant, what it would have in terms of an impact on, say, like, the FEMA flood information. So if we can, you know, show that by completing these projects, that there is at least some reduction in the potential for flooding of the communities that are currently at risk, then that, we'll definitely be doing that as part of the project. But until we get a little bit farther into design, since this, I think, this update on the project is relatively new, and we didn't have every potential scenario analyzed in terms of if you complete this segment, but not this segment, or these three segments, but not this one segment. We don't have every possible iteration of levy construction analyzed to see what the resulting benefit is.
Thank you. Do you know whether it actually relieves Bell Haven property owners of some of their FEMA flood insurance requirements?
Not yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash, and thank you, Mr. Lam. I want to be mindful of my council colleague. First, I'll take Councilmember Mueller, and then Ms. Rock had her hand up, and Mr. Chang has his hand up.
Yeah, I mean, let's just discuss the elephant in the room directly. So what this looks, can look like from the outside is that there's a bunch of money being spent to protect utility and, you know, a high-level net worth property owner, and very little attention being paid to the community around it. And that there's federal money being allocated in that manner. And that is, I think that's a concern that needs to be spoken to directly. So is this, has FEMA constructed this grant? And Mr. Lam, if you would just want to speak to it directly, because that's where we are. That's what it, that's what it looks like. Looks like FEMA's basically created a grant to protect utility in low-lying areas, but, and there's a specific amount of money for that, but, you know, everyone else lives in that area. You're on your own. So let's speak directly about it.
Yeah, so I completely understand that impression. I think I would mention, I would acknowledge that in order to achieve the protection, those segments, that those partners are coming in to protect themselves, you know, the PG&E substation, the Facebook classic campus. If those segments aren't done, then there's still no, going to be no overall protection for the Menlo Park community, the Bell Haven, or the Bayfront community. We need to.
But the issue is, the issue is that those are the entities that have money to begin with. Right? Like, Facebook has a lot of money, respectfully. PG&E has a lot of money. So the city actually has less for projects like this, but the FEMA grants coming in to protect those entities. And so the question is, what's at the end of the rainbow to do those other segments? Does it exist yet?
So, you know, I think, you know, to respond to that, Councilmember, the benefit that the city is getting out of this is obviously that we are able to, by being the applicant on the grant application. So neither PG&E or Facebook can actually apply to FEMA as a qualifying agency. So they're coming to the city to be that qualifying applicant on the project. So when we filed the application through CALOES to FEMA, it's going to say that the City of Menlo Park is applying for this grant. We're going to be looking to, you know, leverage up to $50 million of those grant funds. And there's, I believe, a 25% matching commitment that needs to be made to show that the applicant has, you know, the skin in the game, so to speak. The way this is shaping up right now, the city is looking to leverage and receive the benefit of that $50 million without any city contribution, right? So the entire, the entire matching contribution is coming between PG&E and Facebook. And it's allowing us to, I can pull the map back up again if it pleases council, but, you know, the segments Two and Three from Bedwell Bayfront Park over to the Classic Campus, you know, that's, those are two segments that we would have had to figure out our own way to get those funded through grants. But even then, those grants have, you know, matching elements. And the City of East Palo Alto is, you know, fronted or committed to $5 million of their own funds to protect and make progress on Reaches Eight and Nine. So I think, again, I understand the concern and maybe the the impression it gives. And I think through our outreach, that's definitely something that we're going to need to address and make sure that the community and the, you know, the people of Menlo Park understand that while we have a couple of partners that are, that obviously have their own interests in mind. But by partnering with those partners, the City of Menlo Park is gaining an incredible benefit out of the project.
Yeah, I get it, and I guess the quarrel I have is with, the quarrel that we really have is with FEMA and the way that they've set up the grant, really, to to, and to whom they're prioritizing, that they are going to protect first. Right? So I get, no, don't get me wrong, I understand that PG utility is important, and I understand that that part of the shoreline is important. But the way that the grant has been set up for application is the priority underlying that, I think there's a strong argument, isn't equitable use of tax dollars. So that being said, I get that it's a portion of the wall that we need. So it'll be, after it's done, there'll be less portion, and this is the money coming from the federal government. They've chosen how they're going to allocate, how they're going to create the grant system. So that's who our quarrels with. Can it be expanded? Can the grant application be expanded to take in more area?
So as is, the grants are limited to a maximum of $50 million. So we've leveraged this project to take as much advantage of the available funding for a single project in this cycle. But it, this is an annual program, so there would definitely still be opportunity in future years to apply for, through this program, again, to complete other segments, you know, the last couple of gaps.
Also, maybe I've made a mistake in assumption. So if the City of Menlo Park wanted to apply this for this grant and apply it somewhere else on the wall without the partners, we would be able to do that. We would just have to come up with a million of dollars of their contribution. Is that right? Okay, so the reason why we're proceeding with this first is because they have the millions of dollars of contribution to start with for this portion.
Yes.
And, well, okay. So what's the million? So to complete the wall at this level, what's going to be required of Menlo Park? Or what contribution will be required in a series of grants?
Yes, so right now, it's essentially, it's in-kind support for the project.
No, I'm not talking about this project. I'm saying if we applied for the other grants, how many $50 million grants is it going to take to finish the wall for Menlo Park?
Right, so we're effectively looking at, you know, once, if this, if this project is selected and awarded and completed, there is a segment at Marsh Road, essentially, and a segment, Segment Seven. So I don't know that we have the, those individual dollar amounts ready off the top of our heads, but we can definitely put that information together.
And this is a yearly grant application? And this is a yearly grant application?
Yes.
Yes, and is it, would it make sense then that we would start figuring out? Because I understand my colleagues' concern here. Would it make sense that we would start figuring out how we're going to apply for those grants in successive years? Where the money's going to come from, from Menlo Park?
I think that sounds like a very good idea.
So, and so if people have that in good faith, like, what would that, what are we looking at in order to do that? It's
I, I, I think that, that's where we'll have to come back to with, with, what that, what that plan looks like.
Okay, so then that gets a better, I think I have a better understanding of what my colleagues are concerned about, and that's that there, it's easier to go along with this if there's a full plan as to how the wall's going to be completed, what the contribution is going to need to be for the city for those other segments. In, when in a strategic period of time are we going to do that, and then what will the funding options be for that? So I get where this is a great, this is a start that we're not having to pay for, but understanding, but when you're going to do this piece of it, understanding how you're going to do the rest of it's really important, especially through the equity lens. And I will yield the floor.
Thank you. Margaret Bruce, and before, before that, I know that Heather Rock had her hand up, and then also Bill Chang, so I wanted to give you both an opportunity.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Heather Rock. I'm PG&E's Climate Resilience Chief, I, within our Corporate Sustainability Department. And I, I hopped on because I was going to try to answer some of the questions about the sea level rise scenarios, but understand, you know, the perception that, you know, PG&E is well-funded organization that should be able to, you know, fund this ourselves. And I just want to speak to sort of the, the intent behind this of the FEMA BRIC program and what motivated us to step up here. You know, we increasingly see that the private sector has a really important role to play in terms of preparing ourselves for the physical impacts of climate risk that are very quickly coming upon us. And the FEMA BRIC program is really a program that's intending to foster these public-private sector partnerships. And so, you know, as a member of the community, and as a provider of, of critical energy service to this community, we thought it was important to start to try to leverage a, a new grant application, application like this. I understand that there's some misconceptions, or, you know, that maybe FEMA could have done this in a different way. You know, we, we didn't influence that, that, but we see this as a really amazing opportunity to demonstrate how we can work together collectively as a community, and not just at the local level, but, you know, with US Fish and Wildlife Service, with Caltrans, and just show that, how we can have a really collaborative effort to solve, at least at our regional level, a really difficult problem. I'll yield, and I'll be happy to answer any technical questions about the substation or the project later.
Thank you.
If I, if I may add, Madam Mayor, the, in terms of PG&E's funding, generally speaking, PG&E's funding comes from all of us, ratepayers. And how we spend our money and what we spend our money on must be approved by the CPUC. And in terms of PG&E being a for-profit, you know, New York Stock Exchange listed for-profit company, yes, we are that. However, the CPUC also stipulates that PG&E, if you make too much money, we got to give it back. No other regular business is required to do that. And so how we spend our money is, is highly regulated, and where our money comes from is definitely highly regulated.
Thank you. I'm going to take Councilmember Nash, and then Ms. Bruce.
Actually, thank you. I can wait.
I wanted to mention, mention, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, that going back to 2016, there have been a pair of feasibility studies for all of the nine reaches of this. We can go back to that feasibility study and the 2016 cost estimates for the work for each of those reach segments, and get back to you. Because it's from 2016, the costs are a little bit out of date, but we can at least give the council an order of, you know, some order of magnitude of, about what kind of costs would be expected for Reach One to complete Reach One, and any component of Reach Two that wouldn't be completed as part of this proposed grant. Likewise, for any other portion of Reach Five that might, may or may not be covered with the completion of this grant. Again, I just, I'd love to reiterate how important it is to take a big bite out of this while we have this opportunity. There are future grant opportunities that the JPA is absolutely willing to participate with Menlo Park and others on for those reaches, and to lead the effort for grant applications to, again, Regional Measure AA Grants or other state and federal grants. We absolutely want this to happen.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash, did you have your hand up? If not, I'll go to, I think Vice Mayor Combs, you had your hand up?
I actually did. So I understand the need to use the, to take advantage of the grants and all that are available at this point and do as much as we can. I guess one piece that I'm just looking for is more of a comprehensive approach. Right now, our property, the residents who are at Haven Street, I'd love to know what is the plan there, because they are beyond Reach One. And then, so just generally, how, and I realize this is coming up quickly, but on the other hand, it's been on the horizon for years now that this is a vulnerability for Menlo Park. So I'm, I'm curious, at some point, getting a better vision as to how all of this integrates in. And then I've heard that there's, the Fish and Wildlife is controls quite a bit of Reach Five. Is that something where they've been, there's an agreement with them to complete the reach? Are, are there any issues there?
So, Councilmember Nash, I'll, I'll speak to the, the, the Haven Avenue, and then I think hand it over to, to Ms. Bruce to talk about the coordination with Fish and Wildlife on the, the, the salt ponds and the project over at Reach Five. So Reach One, on, on the map, what was shown was, is, is one of the alternatives for, for Reach One. So if you, if you look at, if you, if you go back and read through the 2016 Safer Bay feasibility study, there, there were multiple alignments, multiple alternatives for, for each of, each of the reaches. Reach One has a couple of options that, that provide obviously different, different benefits. So, so one is to, is, one option is to really just make the improvements right, right at Marsh Road, and then you're, effectively, that, that does not address the, the Haven Avenue properties and residents. Another, another alignment alternative was to carry along the levy improvements kind of be behind the properties on, on Haven Avenue all the way over to, to Redwood City and, and tying into High Ground in Redwood City. So when we talk about the, the, kind of those, those, those two alternatives, I, I think that's, you know, there's, there's different costs associated with those and different benefits, significantly different benefits associated with, with each one of those. The, the, the final alignment has not been decided upon at, at this point, so you know, we're, we're still looking, looking into, into those, those, those two alignments. The, the, the other project that's, that's being led by the, the, the County Agency is to, is to do some improvements to the, the Bayfront Canal. So those, those are, that's an MOU that the council approved just last month or earlier this month. It feels like a long time ago, but I, I think it's probably the last meeting. So, so that, that would provide some storm drainage benefit to, to the Haven Avenue properties, but, but it's not a project that was protecting against sea level rise.
Well, and I also wonder at some point, excuse me for jumping in, but just at what point is private property owners perhaps have some, you know, responsibility in this as well, not just the city?
Right, and, and that's, that's a conversation that was, I think, touched upon at, at that, at that meeting where, where we approved the, the MOU, where, where one, one of the alternatives to, to achieving sea level rise resiliency is to, is to build in some sort of, of impact fee or, or, or some kind of fee into, into development projects you know, in the Bayfront area or, or citywide. It's not something that the city currently has, so, so it's not something that we can, that we can ask for, but it's definitely, definitely an option for, you know, in achieving that goal. And then I was going to turn it over to Ms. Bruce on, on the, the Fish and Wildlife discussion.
Sure. So this may be a little more information than you want, but ponds R1 and R2 that are north of Reach Five and the alignment right along 84 and the Facebook and JPG&E substation, those outward levies have a very limited lifespan. So they are now what's providing protection to that stretch of the shoreline. So as we are able to bolster the shoreline along Reach Five, we will be able to then have Salt Marsh restoration for those ponds outboard and take those further out, outboard levies out and restore it to Title Marsh. Fish and Wildlife is very supportive of this endeavor, and we've been coordinating with them. They know about these plans. They know about the integrated nine reaches and the utilization of that as both restoration opportunity and as buffer and sponge, if you will, for sea level rise and tidal action for Menlo Park's protection.
And that goes all the way down to, that what you've just said would include all the way down to Reach Seven?
The, the ponds R1 and R2 are north of 84. They're just right where Mr. Lam has, has put up the, the, the screen there. The, the outboard levies along Reach Seven, if further south in East Palo Alto, there's already an established marsh that's being restored in that area around Reach Seven. So those in board of Reach, in board of that marsh are just to protect the city of East Palo Alto.
Thank you. And so between 84 and Reach Seven is not, that's where I had heard there was a concern?
Right, so my, at this point, I'm not sure if this grant is going to cover very much of the Reach Five south of 84. So that's a gap along with Reach One that will need to be filled. So part of Reach Seven, part of Reach Five, and Reach One will still be gaps.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, a, a couple of questions first. And maybe this is in a staff report, and I, I missed this. What agency will be the project lead for, for this? Is, is it, is it the JPA? Is it the city? I know the city is obviously the, the lead applicant. But, but is, is that clear? Has that been determined? I think, Ms. Bruce, you, you raise your hands.
I, I think it's the JPA that's going to take the project lead, of course, with substantial support from our private partners and our other nonprofit partners and agency partners.
Cool. Thanks for that, that information. And, and so I, I, I just want to, like, understand, because, because part of the concern that's been expressed is, is about the sort of sequencing, right, in that, that some reaches will get done in this project and are prioritized, and some of these Reach projects, obviously, won't be done. And, and so I, I just want to understand, so like, if Reach Four is completed, right, and, and and if we're talking about Facebook, if, if they are protected, are the PG&E station, is it then just that, like, they are protected, and if none of the other reaches get completed, they're as protected as, as they can be, or as this project sort of allows them to be protected? I'm just trying to understand, because it seems like to me, like, to some degree, if the, and I'm obviously not an expert, it seems like to some degree, if there is some, there, there will be some desire or benefit for, for the, the stakeholders here to see this whole project completed, because that provides them with the maximum protection too. Or am I misreading this? Because in my mind, it's like water goes somewhere. It'll find somewhere to go, which is partly why this is like a regional issue, like even just protecting Menlo Park really doesn't make a lot of sense. And so I, I'm just going to say, like, I am sort of okay and supportive of this project. Again, I, I do share the concern about the sequencing, but based on the whole idea of that, like, the real value of maximum protection is with the whole project, and, and all stakeholders are going to be invested and interested in seeing the whole project ultimately completed. But I didn't want to go out there, but please someone tell me if that is, is not an accurate assessment of the situation, and PG&E and Facebook can just protect themselves, and they do have maximum protection, and everyone else could flood.
Councilmember, I mean, you're, you're absolutely right. I think the, you, you can't build, you know, I mean, these aren't, these aren't walls, they're levies, but, but, but the analogy is, you, you can't build, you know, three walls around your, your property and expect to be, you know, safe from, you know, anything, anything getting in. So, you know, even, even the, the Reach Four, which on the map you can see is, is around the, the Facebook East or Classic Campus. But what, what we determined in, in kind of putting together the application package, when, when we heard that, that Facebook was interested, was really to, to show that, to show that we could achieve, you know, enough benefit to qualify through the BRIC application process, we really needed to include both Reaches Two and Three. So Reaches Two and Three tie into Bedwell Bayfront Park, provides a, a significant amount of protection along, you know, along 84, and then, and then all the way around the, the Classic Campus, and then, you know, the, the PG&E substation, and, and up to where, where Reach Five would cross, cross 84 under, under the bridge. So you know, I think, you know, Margaret mentioned earlier, it's, it's taking, you know, a significant bite of the apple. You know, the, these projects are, are hard to complete, and, and, and doing, doing it all in one fell swoop was, you know, probably, probably more than, than could be accomplished, you know, especially with, with, with this, this, this cycle of the grant application. So again, you know, we're excited that we're able to partner with, with, with Facebook and PG&E to, to make a substantial headway into, into protecting the shoreline of Menlo Park. But, but, but yes, you know, Drew, that, that's, that, you're, you're correct. It's, you know, they, they, they still have skin in the game in terms of, you know, achieving ultimate protection, which, which requires all the reaches to be completed.
I'm happy to make a motion, but I certainly don't want to move this along if, if there are still other questions from, from my colleagues.
Well, I don't have any additional questions, Vice Mayor Combs, and, and just as a, as a reminder for everyone that my intention was to have some language added that prioritized the, the community. I, I am concerned, I'm in support of the project because I know it's a step in a, in a good direction, but I'm concerned that it's not inclusive, and how can we get there? And so, and I believe with all this great expertise, especially with the San Francisco Guido Creek JPA, and the fact that we have our vice mayor sits on there, and then also with the new flood resiliency project happening, and then also along with the Bayfront Canal, there's all these individual projects. It would be great if it was all one, but I know we can get there.
Vice Mayor Combs?
I just want to say, yeah, you're totally right, and my apologies that I forgot that, that was, again, one of the things you want to, to call out. And again, I'm supportive of that, how that, that is worded. I, I will leave to you and others, but, but yeah, my apologies that I, I forgot that.
Mayor, would you like to ask to speak the motion that was made by Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Yes.
So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Combs to receive and file an update on the Federal Emergency Management Agency Building Facility and Infrastructure and Communities Grant Application and authorize the mayor to sign a letter of project support, including the addition of language to property protections for neighboring or neighborhood communities. Mayor Taylor, does that appropriately reflect the language you want to include?
I have no idea, Ms. Heron. I'm sorry, but you're you're going in and out, and I wasn't sure if it was me or you.
Sure. Well, I will repeat the language that we were adding. So it's to sign a letter of support, including additional language for property protections for neighborhood communities. Does that appropriately reflect the language question?
Yes, and if there's any other modifications, would that need to come back to the council? But I think that covers it fine, Ms. Heron. I'm sorry, it's just been a long evening.
Totally understandable. So the motion as stated by Vice Mayor Combs, do we have a second? Councilmember number one, any further city council discussion for the question? Seeing none, I will call vote.
Hi. Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda. Completed the consent calendar, the informational items. The informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Information items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member or a member of the public may request to make a commit, a comment or ask a question on any item. And at this time, Ms. Heron, can we take public comment on the informational items? I one, city council agenda topics for December twenty twenty to January twenty twenty-one. And then I two, below market rate housing fund, notice of funding available.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on items I one through I two, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone. You can address the city council at this time. So final call for public comment on items I one or I two. Seeing no hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Are there any questions or comments from council on these items? Okay. So we will move on to item J, which is the, oops. Are there any council member reports or city manager reports, excuse me?
No reports this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The next item is city council member reports. Count Vice Mayor Combs?
This isn't as much as a a report as a follow-up from our last meeting. Um, one of the the questions I would propose was was in in connection to funding, funding from either the redevelopment agency or or Measure T funds that had gone to the communities that are that are now District, District Two. And so, and and I had asked Mr. Murphy, and he had thought some funds had been earmarked for for the the field that is actually part of the Ravenswood School District but is adjacent to to the Willow Oaks Park. And that 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 funding may have been at the million-dollar level from the redevelopment agency. And so the staff got back to me on that and it was and the total was about four hundred thousand dollars. And so I I did want to follow up because if if you include the funds that we we approved last last council session from from Measure T, and if you include all of the 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 prior Measure T funds and include all the redevelopment agency funds, that total roughly based on my estimates is about forty-two million dollars. And so, and of which we think about four hundred thousand dollars went to 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 redoing the Willow Oaks Park Field. And and so that's that's on my estimate about one percent. And so I I just wanted to sort of as a follow-up, you know, plant that seed with with my colleagues. Of the forty-two million dollars that had been spent over the past twenty years, less than one percent of it went to 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 parks in 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 my in my district. And so from these funding sources, again, there have been other funding sources. And so and so I do think that that's that's an important point to make because we we talk a lot about equity and in fairness. And 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 I I think that that is something that that, again, doesn't sit sit well with me. So that, again, not a council report, but but more of a follow-up that that I wanted to share with my colleagues.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. This is the last call for council member reports. Okay, well, thank you very much, and this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.